To go ahead and get this meeting started. We'll call the meeting to order. Now, let's go ahead and approve the minutes or take a look at the minutes for the regular meeting on April 20th. Has every member had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
If so, is there any discussion or changes for the minutes? If none, then I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded by Councilmember Blubog. There's no discussion on the motion. Clerk, roll the roll. Members will pass the vote. For the result of six yays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items one through 15.
Is there any discussion on consent agenda items? If there is no discussion on consent agenda, then I will make a motion to pass.
Second.
The looking at Vice Mayor's walking down. I didn't know if I was going to fill a roster till we got here, but it looks like we got a second. Make a motion to pass the consent agenda as presented. Motion was seconded by Councilmember Blubog. Clerk will hold the roll open till all members have a chance to vote. I can show the Vice Mayor has given a thumbs up. The result of seven yays to zero nays, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Board of Bids and Contracts dated April 26, 2021, and Wichita Airport Authority Board of Bids and Contracts dated April 26, 2021.
Good morning, and welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Hannah Lang, Department of Finance. First engineering bid we have is stormwater sewer number 742 RCB replacement, Donlea and Sons Construction for $356,134. Stormwater sewer number 754 Pump Station Two Backup Generator, Atlas Electric for $399,750. 2021 OP-3 CIP Street Repairs Phase Two, Purdue Construction for $564,450. 16,000 GVW Cabin Chassis 11-Foot Steak Bed Rustiac Ford for the base bid with option two and three for a total of $64,213. 58,000 GVWR Dump Trucks with Snowplow and Spreader Summit Truck Group for Group One Base Bid, Option Eight for a total of $153,910. Group Two Base Bid and Option Six with a quantity of two on both of those for a total of $144,810.50. Rebuild Compactor for Landfill Foley Equipment Company $475,000. Airport CCTV Replacement Deferred May 3rd Board of Bids. This is our purchasing procurement website as well as our open request for proposals. That is the Board of Bids recommendation. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions on the item? Does anybody from the public who would like to speak to the item? If there's no public input, then we'll go back to discussion, back to the bench. Is there any discussion? If there is none, then I will make the motion to take staff's recommended action, to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. Clerk, roll the roll. Members pass the vote. Result of seven yays, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Petitions for public improvements.
Welcome, sir. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilmembers Gary Jansen, Public Works Engineering. The item for you this morning is a request for approval of petitions for public improvements. The signatures on all petitions represent 100% of the improvement district, and all petitions are valid per state statute. The first development is North Gate Fifth Edition, west of Meridian, north of 53rd Street North. New petitions have been submitted for water, stormwater drains, stormwater sewer, sanitary sewer, and paving improvements. The next addition is Hogan-Chisholm Edition, north of 29th Street North and west of Broadway. In September of 2016, the City Council approved petitions for water, sewer, drainage, and paving improvements. Developers now submitted revised petitions for the same to meet current market conditions. We also have Firefly Way Second Edition, which is south of 29th Street North, east of Greenwich Road. In February of 2021, the City Council approved the petition for paving to serve Firefly Way Second Edition. The developers now submitted revised petition again to meet current market conditions. With that, staff recommended City Council approve the new petitions and budgets, adopt the amending resolutions, and authorize necessary signatures. And I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Are there any questions from staff? If there are none, is there any input from the public? See none, discussion will come back to the bench. Is there any discussion on the item? If there is no further discussion, then I will make the motion to take staff's recommended action to approve the new and revised petitions and budgets, adopt the new and amending resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. Clerk, roll the roll. Result of seven yays, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
Start off with appointments, if possible. Councilmember Bright.
Thank you. I have two appointments today. First one is Michelle Cadena, C-A-D-E-N-A, to the Diversity, Inclusion, and Civil Rights Board, and then to the Historic Preservation Board. I will nominate Bond, Gary Bond. Sorry. Bad joke.
Talk about that all night. All right. So, and also the Historic.
Historic Preservation Board.
Are there any other appointments at this time? If no appointments, I will make the motion to accept the appointments.
Does the motion also include that joke?
Yes. Of course. I believe the joke would be in the minutes.
Second.
Yes. Motion is seconded by the Vice Mayor. Clerk, roll the roll. As a court seven, for the result of seven yays, the motion does pass. Back on announcements, or, yup, not really good a group. Any announcements? Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just want to encourage everybody to wear your mask and get vaccinated. The numbers in Sedgwick County are going up a little bit, so we've got to do our part to keep those numbers down.
Councilmember Sorello.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to encourage everybody to come out to Brush Up Broadway on Saturday, this weekend, Saturday, May 1st. We're going to do some graffiti painting over and cleaning up and have a lot of friendship and fellowship afterwards and maybe a little cookout. So, 8:00 AM to noon, Brush Up Broadway on South Broadway between Harry and Pawnee.
Excellent. Now, we'll just make a quick announcement that our friends over at the Sedgwick County Health Department are now having walk-ins for folks who are interested in getting a vaccine. They do allow appointments still for those who are on a tighter schedule, but if you are in the area and would like just to walk in and get your vaccine, they are now offering that, so. Great thing. Councilmember Lico.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that we had a great ribbon cutting at the Ralph Walz Riverside Tennis Center this weekend. Thank you, Mayor, for coming out and helping us with that. Nice turnout. They had a tournament, and it was a lot of fun, and looking forward to lots of tennis and pickleball being played at our expanded tennis center. Thank you.
Absolutely beautiful facilities. If you haven't had a chance to get out there, we recommend folks go and check it out. Also, great people there. Someone asked me if I played tennis, which was a huge compliment, so half the time I'm just trying to keep my Fitbit from yelling at me. Other announcements? There are no other announcements. What we are doing is we will adjourn the meeting, but then we're going right into our council workshop meeting for those who are watching online, so we will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by the Vice Mayor. Clerk, roll the roll. Result of seven yays to zero nays, that motion does pass. I will turn the floor over to our city manager, Manager Leighton, so they can start the workshop.
Leighton, Bob Leighton. That's how it's doing.
Wait, 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 wait. I'm going to take back the floor. On December 20th, 21st of last year was the last time Bob made a joke. And this day, too, let the record show that.
We've got three items for today's workshop. The first one has to do with the Integrated Care Team that was originally approved by the council as, on a pilot basis, as a pilot project, and then because of the success experienced during the pilot, was brought on on a more permanent basis. I'm going to introduce Chief Snow to do the introduction, and then we'll give you the report for 2020, so you understand the results from ICT1's work last year.
Good morning, Chief. Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. With me today, I have Malachi Winters, who is with the Office of Medical Director. He has been the one that has been the manager, overseer, and coordinator for ICT1 program. So, he's here today to present you with a report that provides you with all the facts and information regarding ICT1 and its success. So, Malachi?
Welcome, sir.
Good morning. Thanks for having me in here today. My name is Malachi Winters, Program Manager, Sedgwick County EMS, and oversee the ICT1 program. Hopefully, that our 2020 Annual Summit of Report, you guys have been given that, thus where the deep dive of all the specifics of all the numbers is at. But I wanted to kind of just go over those at a high level, give you guys information, talk to you about the challenges that we're currently having with the program and opportunities as well, and be available to answer any questions that we have for you. So, a real quick overview. The Integrated Care Team is a multidisciplinary coresponder program where there is a qualified mental health professional, a law enforcement officer, and a paramedic responding to mental health crises in the community from a single vehicle. We've had a lot of success with this program, and this really does seem to be a model that a lot of communities across the country are trying out right now. Correspondent programs where we have a multidisciplinary approach to dealing with mental health issues are really kind of in the forefront of, you know, innovative, effective care. So, the Integrated Care Team is a cooperative endeavor between the City of Wichita and Sedgwick County. City of Wichita supplies the equipment and the vehicle from the Wichita Fire Department and a police officer from Wichita Police Department. The county provides a qualified mental health professional from Calm Care Crisis Center and a paramedic from Sedgwick County EMS. So, looking at the numbers for 2020 as a whole, ICT1 responded to 419 calls. You can see the numbers that we, units that we were able to free up. We were able to free up 236 law enforcement units, 122 fire apparatus, and 165 ambulances for a grand total of 523 911 resources that were freed up from mental health calls so they could be available for other emergencies. We avoided trips to the Calm Care Crisis Center 218 times and avoided 220 trips to the emergency department. Little note on that, 220 trips to the emergency department, that probably had a cost savings for the system of $2.3 million. When we're looking at how ICT1 deals with these mental health crises, when we're looking at the whole group here, you'll see that on this pie chart, we have four sections: treat in place, transport, handoff to other agencies, and non-engagement. Now, we typically, when we're reporting, we take out the non-engagement section of the pie. That's the red section of the pie, and those are situations where we got on scene and the patient wasn't there, or the patient refused to engage or even talk to us, or, you know, some other situation where we couldn't have made a difference in that patient outcome because either there wasn't a patient or they refused to engage. So, what we really want to look at is the ones that we do make a difference on. So, if we take that red slice of the pie out and look at this from this perspective, we're looking at a treat in place of about 54%. So, greater than half the time, we're able to find a solution that doesn't involve going to the hospital or going to the Calm Care Crisis Center, but rather treating the patient in place with resources that we, and direct therapy right there. And that is actually pretty well in line with other coresponder programs across the region. That's kind of where we look at our hot, at our sweet spot. We want a goal between 50 and 60% of the time that we're treating in place. That seems to be where others around the area are hitting that as well. Handoff to other agencies, that 9% in the yellow, that is split about 50/50 between handoff to law enforcement or handoff to EMS because this is a true medical call rather than a mental health call. As far as our transports, the vast majority of those are going to the hospital. You'll see that's broken down into voluntary versus involuntary. That's just referring to it from a legal standpoint on whether or not they had a court hold put on them. So, somebody who was involuntary was probably somebody who was suicidal and had a court hold put on them. That's the vast majority of them, and then we have some other transports to Calm Care Crisis, Substance Abuse Center of Kansas, the psychiatric observation unit in St. Joe, et cetera. Additionally, we've, starting with fourth quarter of 2020, and now for everything moving on forward, we've added some additional reporting metrics. These were based off of feedback from participating agencies as well as Governor Kelly's Commission on Racial Justice. And, you know, the things that will be reported on moving on forward is, you know, one of the things that we found that ICT1 is good at, even if they don't make it all the way to the scene to directly deal with the patient, is having that multidisciplinary approach. They give good advice, and a lot of times, a phone call from a police officer or a paramedic that's on the scene of, hey, what should I do in this? That maybe they, just giving that advice over the phone is all that's needed at that time rather than a full response from the team. So, they are available for phone consultations, and they actually do that on a fairly frequent basis. So, we're going to be tracking those, the number of phone consultations that the team does versus the number of actual responses. Also, starting to track more of the demographics of the population served, including client gender, race, and ethnicity, and whether or not that they are, whether or not they're already enrolled in mental health services. Right now, that number we're seeing is about 50%, around there, of the people that ICT1 sees are already enrolled in mental health services. The other 50% haven't touched the system yet. And we're also looking at where we're getting the requests for ICT1. A real quick look at that right now. Law enforcement is the biggest batch with that orange slice of the pie. About 35% of our requests for ICT1 come from law enforcement. 32% are coming from Sedgwick County 911, directly from dispatch. They're the ones answering the phones, and sometimes they can pick up that, hey, this seems like something that would probably be appropriate for ICT1, and just get them requests right there. The 17% blue self-dispatch slice of the pie, those are the ones where ICT1 is watching the 911 board on which calls are coming out across fire and EMS and law enforcement, and they're picking it up, picking up those calls on their own. So, additionally, we have a request from EMS, request from the MCU Board, the Mobile Crisis Unit, which is located in Calm Care Crisis Center, which we differentiate that from Calm Care itself, that green slice of the pie that says Calm Care, which is about 7% of our requests, is not Calm Care Crisis, but other Calm Care services where they've identified they have a client that is having a bad day. So, some challenges with ICT1. The first one is the demand exceeds our resources. There is always going to be more mental health calls that are going on than what ICT1 can respond to. We certainly, this community could certainly use more ICT Integrated Care Teams. You know, I don't have numbers on it, but all of the partnering agencies, particularly Wichita Police Department, can attest to how often that they need ICT1, and ICT1 is either not on duty that day or they're not available because they're dealing with another issue. It happens very regularly. So, really, the right thing probably to do is to expand the program. However, from the county's perspective, we have some serious significant issues when it comes to staffing of the county partnering agencies, particularly Calm Care and EMS. 43% of Calm Care's staffing table is vacant in Calm Care Crisis right now. They don't have more therapists to give to this program. EMS has 22% vacancies on their staffing table, and we don't have more paramedics to give to this program as well. So, as much as the county and myself personally believe in the effectiveness of this program, we are not at this time recommending an expansion until we can fix some recruitment or retention issues on our end. With that, I'll stand for questions, if anybody has any.
I don't have a question, but I'd just like to say thank you for the presentation, and I always enjoy metrics. I think it's great to be able to make data-driven decisions, but I also just wanted to share a quick story. I serve on the anti-human trafficking task force for our community, and I was visiting with one of our leaders in that area, and she was telling me a story of how two young women were coming from out of state who were human trafficking victims, and they got where they needed to go somehow, and they called the police, but ICT1 came, and they were able to help these two young women that evening instead of potentially staying in the police station or, you know, them leaving. And I'm trying to de-identify the situation, obviously, yeah, but she just told a really significant story of how this was working, and, you know, we don't always think about even human trafficking and the impact that this can have on that in our community. So, again, thanks for the great work, and I really appreciate our friends across the street with the county for their partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to follow up on the comment about, I guess, how we would likely be recommending expansion of this program, however, because of issues with retention and hiring new staff over at Calm Care and EMS at this point, it just doesn't happen. I guess the bandwidth would take on.
Right. We frankly don't have the capacity to do so. I mean, FTEs are wonderful, but those would just be unfilled positions if we had those added to our staffing table for expansion. Our primary mission is to put therapists in the crisis center and to put paramedics on the ambulances first, and we've got to fix that issue first.
And did I hear this right, that it was 43% of Calm Care is vacant at this point?
For Calm Care Crisis Center, yes.
Crisis.
Yep.
And what? What are we assuming that problem is stemming from?
So, I'm hesitant to speak for Calm Care. I can speak for EMS, and I would guess, and this is Malachi's assumption, not speaking for Calm Care, that compensation is probably a big factor for retention.
So, and that's your guess for EMS. So, it's, I don't know if these questions have been asked or if you've been privy to these answers or not, so feel free to tell me that, but the, I'm trying to figure out, is this an issue of compensation with money, or is this an issue of we don't have enough trained mental health folks to help supply the system, that pipeline? Because I think that understands the problem, but will help us understand a bit better different ways that we can solve it.
So, I would say that's an emphatic yes to both. Part of the reason that we don't have the mental health professionals is because the pay, doing that work in the street, and those in crisis, and the underserved population is very stressful work, and, you know, being able to compensate for that is something that we don't do real well.
With the mental health professionals, are we looking, are we talking about bachelor level, or are we talking about master's level?
All of the mental health professionals that are therapists at Calm Care are master's level.
Has anyone, I guess, looked into somewhat of a standard for programs that have faced similar issues and how they successfully resolve those issues?
I have not specifically asked about from partners that are doing coresponder programs similar to this. In June, our whole team is going to go up to Overland Park and participate in the National Coresponder Conference, where other programs similar to this from across the country are going to come together. I think that'll be a good time to network and to ask our colleagues across the nation, how are we dealing with these issues? We're actually going to be presenting on there, up there as well, and that's going to be one of the challenges that I'm going to be talking about while we're up there, is staffing.
My last question, you don't know off the top of your head what the, I guess, average salary for a master's level professional in this program, just so I guess we get.
It's actually in the report, and this is the entry level pay, and this is including benefits, so the cost of the county including benefits is $74,500.
And that's master level MSW?
Yes.
Further questions?
I'd like to follow up on that just a little bit. I know in the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition, we've been, one of our focus areas is workforce pipeline, working on exactly what Malachi is talking about, and so there is a whole subcommittee out of that coalition that is working on this, both at the state level and the local level, because it is, it's a huge issue. It's not, it's not a simple thing like increase their pay, or it's very complex, and so there is a group working on that. And then, Malachi, can you remind me what the hour, you might have said this, but what are the hours right now for the ICT1?
So, currently, ICT1 is working Monday through Thursday from noon till 10:00 PM.
Till 8:00 PM?
10.
10, okay.
Yep.
Thank you. And that's just one unit?
That's correct.
No, yeah, okay. Thank you.
So, I guess that would just leave me with more questions, if possible. I just hypothesize that it's going to be pay and pipeline, getting enough qualified people. What are some of the other variables that organizations who have been looking at this problem might be coming up with?
Variables as far as retention of employees or just variables with the program in general?
Well, maybe, it was just mentioned that it's more than just pay, and I mentioned pipeline and pay, my own ignorance of, I guess, what we put this problem, those are the first two, if my mind jumps to you, but my goal is to understand the problem.
I think that there are some very similar issues going on on the EMS side as there are on the mental health side. I think the mental health side is magnified, but the pipeline issues that you spoke of are, they're real, particularly with the pandemic that occurred. There's nobody enrolling in paramedic school. You know, we're looking at maybe snagging two graduates out of each class, and there's two classes in the region, so maybe four paramedics a year, and there's more people leaving or retiring than there is, so we're having a negative, you know, staffing impact from that. How do you get more people enrolled in those classes is a much larger program that we haven't been able to crack that nut, and I think that the mental health world is also dealing with those exact same issues, of how do we get people enrolled in these programs first and get interested in these career fields.
Mayor, what I'd like to do is have an opportunity to visit with the county manager, bring some information back regarding their recruitment efforts. I also want to note that this is just one of our strategies for dealing with people in crisis, especially those that our police department typically comes in contact with. We have a partnership with Calm Care to have a person embedded in the department. We also have the social worker interns that are helping, especially with our homeless population. So, there are a number of initiatives that we've undertaken over the last year to two years, so this is just one tool. I do know that the county commission is very supportive of ICT1 and would also like to explore. like to explore options for its expansion. So, if you'd be okay with that, I'd like to visit with the county manager, maybe get a report to give you a little more information regarding what the impediments are and what it would take to expand the program.
Of course. Good. Is there further discussion?
Yeah, I had one question on the pipeline talent recruitment, or is there a strategy to reach out to HBCUs? Because I know that market is kind of untapped quite a bit.
Just for those who are watching, might not know what HB.
HBC, historical black college or university? So our closest one is Langston.
I, I can't speak on to whether or not com care has reached out to those. From the EMS perspective, we've traditionally recruited from local colleges. I do not know if any historically black colleges and universities have paramedic programs. But, uh, we, we've traditionally recruited from state of Kansas.
Okay. And just a follow-up, um, it's my understanding, the, it's a brief understanding, thanks to the courtesy of our, uh, our fire chief, the levels that lead up to a paramedic where it's EMT and then, yeah, then, paramedic. Anyways, the param, the EMT side can be trained as a vocational track, not so much rolling into a formal, a college program. When we talk about paramedics and paramedic school, is that also vocational or is that teaming up with a tech college or is that something we can expand more so as a program that's internal or is that a program that is external at a higher institution or higher education institution?
The, uh, the state of Kansas actually requires an associate's degree in order to take your paramedic license, so pretty much every paramedic school in the state of Kansas is ran by a community college.
Thank you. Further discussion? Well done. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, you, you've heard from Chief Ramsey during the last six months about concerns and rise in violent crime, not just here in Wichita, but in around the country, cities around the country. And the department has been working on a number of initiatives in order to address maybe the underlying causes for some of that criminal activity. Captain Jason Stevens is going to run through a program that is targeting those who seem to have been maybe the, um, been involved in multiple violent crimes and some tools that we're bringing forward to maybe address those issues. So, but that'll turn it over to Captain Stevens.
Good morning. No problem.
Captain Stevens, masquerading as Chief Ramsey.
I just wanted to introduce this because I, I'm really excited about this program and remind you, this is part of our strategic and comprehensive strategy on violence reduction. It's been delayed a little bit because of COVID. Uh, I know Counselor Johnson and I talked about this, I think before, he's been on the council. It's something that I think is, is really going to help us in many ways. And keep in mind that the last year, not only has it delayed this, but it's delayed a lot of things and the police department really is, was the only part of the criminal justice system that kept operating at full capacity. And I think a lot of our issues that we're dealing with and the increase in violence has to do with the closure or delays in the court processing, along with many other reasons. But I am behind this program one hundred and ten percent and I'm excited to share with you today. Captain Stevens has been our point person and has spent a significant amount of time putting this together, so.
Thanks. Captain, welcome.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. As the chief mentioned, I'm Captain Jason Stevens and I'm, uh, in the Persons Crimes Bureau of the Wichita Police Department. I'm here to talk to you about our Wichita Ceasefire Initiative. First, I want to define what focused deterrence is, is because that's the basis, the foundation of this program. Focus deterrence is just as, as it says here, it's a crime reduction strategy that carefully selects prolific and violent criminal offenders to receive concentrated law enforcement attention while simultaneously offering them concentrated social services. And our goal is to move law enforcement away from random, non-strategic approaches and zero tolerance strategies that often result in the arrest of low-level offenders and what they do is they fail to concentrate on the most violent in our community. Focus deterrence is a, is a theory that originated in Boston back in the mid nineteen nineties and it was intended to address violent crime, particularly gang-related shootings and homicides. It's an evidence-based approach based on the deterrence theory of crime, which asserts that people are discouraged from committing crime if they truly believe that they will be caught and punished for those crimes. And its, uh, foundation is on the certainty, severity, and swiftness of law enforcement action. There's two different types of deterrence theories that are touched upon here. The first is specific deterrence, which focuses on individuals and deterring them on an individual basis from committing crimes, and then there's general deterrence, where others become aware of the crime deterrence effect of individuals and the punishment that they received and it discourages them from committing future similar crimes. Through collaboration, we broaden our legitimate opportunities available to at-risk individuals in our community. This model improves the legitimacy of law enforcement by making police action commensurate with criminal behavior and it offers consistency throughout our processes. It brings the police and the, and the community together as a united front against crime and that's one of the, the underlying messages that, as you'll see, that we, as we move through the program, that it is truly a partnership between law enforcement and the community. It also communicates consequences in a stern yet respectful way to our focused deterrence candidates. Our criminal justice partners, in short, are local law enforcement, the Wichita Police Department, but we will partner with federal law enforcement agencies, state law enforcement agencies, the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Department, all of the corrections agencies in our community. And our community partners will consist of influential community members, wherever they may be. We'll provide an impact, uh, community statement and I'll discuss that further in a minute. Community mentors and then, of course, our social service providers and I'll go into more detail about that here shortly. One thing I want to stress is that focused deterrence is not a soft approach on crime. It really intends to accurately identify those that are in our community that are committing a large disproportionate amount of crime, that small percentage of people that's committing that disproportionate large amount of crime. It notifies focused deterrence candidates that law enforcement in the community know who they are, that we are watching, and they will be held accountable for their actions. As I mentioned at the front, focused deterrence is the strategy, but what we're going to call our program is the Wichita Ceasefire Initiative. And we've identified the primary problem in Wichita is non-fatal and fatal shootings and other violent crimes involving guns and gun violence. We've also identified youthful offenders under the age of twenty as being our focus for the program. We chose this age particularly because this is a vulnerable population, but we also believe that they're very, or highly redeemable. We've also recognized that they account for approximately twenty-five percent of all of the shooting incidents that occurred within the last five years in our community. We will utilize our newly-founded juvenile intervention unit and our community support specialists to complement the program and I think that those two entities will complement our efforts quite well. From a workflow standpoint or the program structure, it, it occurs through four, or I'm sorry, six different phases. Phase one is high-risk individual selection. Two is notification. Three is the call-in session. Four is our enforcement or service delivery. Next is follow-up communication and last is assessment and I will talk on each point briefly. Our high-risk offender selection is based on a scoring system that our Wichita Police Department Crime Linkage Unit or Crime Analysts have developed. It's not an original formula. It was originally developed by a crime analyst from a police agency in California and has been used in other places in the country. But when we talk about selection of high-risk juveniles in this, in this case, we want to stress that the process really needs to be objectively fair and that they must not believe that they're being randomly targeted. We want to make sure instead that they're selected because of the frequency and severity of their criminal behavior. They have to truly believe that they control being a focus of law enforcement and that they can change their behavior and that they do bear responsibility for selection. Our scoring system that is developed is a fifteen-point scoring system that is prioritized by our department and community objective, which in this case is gun violence and shootings. So at the top of the fifteen-point scale, we have, we have an offense rate and it's based on crime classification values. We've given value to each severity level of crime. Homicide being at the very top of the list. Other gun violence crimes such as aggravated assaults or batteries with a firearm, criminal possession of firearm cases hold positions at the top of that list. Below that in, in the priority are other serious offenses such as rape, robbery, aggravated battery by other means, and other violent crimes. And at the bottom of the list, we give lower values to drug offenses and property crimes. Then there's a role weight that is assigned and this is based on predetermined values like being a restee or a suspect in a case, being a witness or a victim or an other party in a case. Because through research in, uh, and other methods, we've learned that today's victim is oftentimes tomorrow's suspect and vice versa. And individuals who often are witnesses of shootings, we've low, we've noticed that they, they recur across the time and cases as being at some of these shooting scenes. Now, arrests and suspects get the highest level of, of ranking, whereas victims are at the very bottom. And I assure you that there's no way that someone could be a victim even in even a dozen cases and, and be able to rise to the prominence of being even noticed by our, our method. Then there's the, finally, the date decay total. And basically it's based on the number of days from the day to the last offense and it subtracts a point value per day from that score. And really what this does is it assures that a crime that you may have been arrested for five years ago doesn't even come near to being as high in value as a crime that you may have committed five days ago. So it, it kind of allows for, uh, time and space to, to, if you will, water down the, the value. Because people do change and that's, this is the, one of the, the priorities of this program is to help people change. So ultimately where we get the score is the offense weight multiplied by the role weight and then subtract a decay total to get a final listing or point value. Once the candidates have been selected, then there is the notification process. We'll serve this letter on official department letterhead directed from the chief's office. There's two different categories of individuals that I, I want to stress that exist here. Those who are subject to probation or parole currently and for those that we have partnered with Community Corrections and KDOC, Kansas Department of Corrections. And their parole officer or probation officer will hand-deliver those letters to those individuals and they will be compelled to attend a call-in, as I'll describe in a minute, as a condition of their probation or parole. Those who are not subject to probation or parole will still get a hand-delivered notification, but it will be done by our juvenile intervention officers, our school resource officers, or our community policing unit officers. And I want to stress that we want to contact influential members of their family or community to kind of help assist in facilitating their presence at the call-in. The call-in session is a very structured and scripted meeting that is moderated. I want to kind of liken it to, if you can imagine, an intervention. First, a high-ranking law enforcement member will present a law enforcement message. They will explain why the individuals have been selected. They will convey a message that further violent behavior, or as we will call them, trigger events, will result in concentrated and coordinated law enforcement response and a coordinated law enforcement and community response. Law enforcement, however, still wants to convey the message of respect and that we do believe that individuals can make the right decisions and present, uh, and still present an offer of social services for those who choose to accept them. Then a influential community member will deliver the community message. And this will be a basic moral message against violence in general and a unified partnership with law enforcement. We'll have an influential member of the community. We will have a victim impact speaker and a mentor who can speak to their own experiences as they have walked in the, in the same shoes as, as our candidates have. Then finally, of course, the service provider message, which will be delivered primarily by our community support specialist and our juvenile intervention unit. We want to then progress to an enforcement or service delivery and I want to stress the word or. It's not both continuously. It may transition from one to the other, but it's not both. We're going to closely monitor for trigger events and law enforcement really for this program to work has to follow through with our promise that if you do continue to participate in violent activity, you'll be held accountable. However, if the choice is made to accept the services offered and stop criminal behavior, law enforcement will stop focusing attention on these individuals, aside from continuing on that mentorship role and facilitating the service providing that we are going to give them. There will be a needs assessment session after the, as I meant, as I preluded to, after the call-in where we'll identify what is needed and we will facilitate those. Some of the potential services that we may offer may be to assist with their education, to provide them with options or opportunities to continue their education if they've been expelled from USD two-five-nine or have dropped out, to help them get their, their high school diploma, to offer tutoring and a host of other services involving education, job skill training, how to do a resume, how to dress for success, how to complete a job interview, how to complete a job application, and even try to assist them with finding and retaining employment. There's also mental health, resources in the community, substance abuse resources, and housing and other resources that we will try to pair them with. And the message that we want, that focused deterrence from all of the research and articles that I've, I've gone over is simply, we will help you if you. is simply, "We will help you if you let us, but we will arrest you if you force us to." Next, we want to make sure that we have continuous follow-up communication. And this consists of communicating our program successes through the media. And this is twofold. It gives us hopefully community support for the program, but also relays that message and that general deterrence formula to other potential offenders. What happened to the individuals that chose not to partake in the resources and chose to continue a life of crime or a life of violent behavior? To basically convey that certain swift and severe punishment in the call-ins for the new group of individuals, the new candidates coming in, to explain to them, "This is what happened when the last individuals did not select to participate in the services and continued a life of violence." We've partnered with Wichita State University as a research partner. We're going to measure a reduction in homicide and non-fatal shooting incidents. We're going to measure a reduction in other violent crime and specifically a reduction in crimes committed by our focused deterrence candidates. We're going to form three committees. And the basic workflow is going to be the data and enforcement committee will compile the list of candidates. They will redact all of the identifier and personal information about those candidates and pass that list to the leadership committee, who will then select candidates. And the leadership committee also kind of runs the program and does the day-to-day logistics of the program. Our leadership committee will have all of our partners on it, USD 259, our local and federal law enforcement partners, our community corrections and KDOC partners, and we will have spots for community members as well. They will then pass the selection of candidates to the services and messaging committee, who will coordinate the notification and the call-in process. And the cycle will just continue month to month or quarter to quarter as we move along and identify new candidates for the program. And here, I just have a basic slide that stresses that this is a department-wide program and that every member of the department has a specific role to play. And last, as I alluded to before, this originated in Boston in the 1990s. It has been replicated in many, many cities. And this is just a small selection of cities that have chose to replicate the program. It's been done for drug market activity. It's done for shootings. It's been done focusing on gang violence. But as you can see here, the ones that I've listed, Operation Boston Ceasefire, there was a 63% reduction in youth homicides, 25 gun assaults. And I won't read all of these verbatim, you can see. Indianapolis had a 34% reduction in homicides. Cincinnati Initiative to Reduce Violence, or SERV, had a 35% reduction in focused group member involved homicides. I'll mention that we sent a delegation to Cincinnati, Ohio, last year to talk to them about their focused deterrence program. So I know a little bit more about theirs than some of the others. And as you can see, there have been modest to significant reductions in firearm homicides and shootings over the course of time. And here are my resources and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
All right, I'll answer a question first, if you don't mind. The idea that 25% of our violent crimes are committed by people who are 20 years old or in an age range is quite trouble. That is a transformational age in which I think that people can't get on the right track at that age because they don't have the right opportunities. And I mentioned that because look at these previous success stories that other decades, how it seems people have mimicked this program. Kind of kick back to the last presenter who talked about how you have a shortage of people who want to be paramedics or, you know, we talk about some of our issues we were having with training the next generation of our workforce and getting them into some of these jobs that are needed right now. Do any of these, these success stories that you have cited have a job training component to it? And you mentioned, you know, we can give folks social services that they need, but I'm wondering if just the opportunity to get further education, a credential, and enter a job, if that could be integrated as well? If it's been successfully integrated in other areas?
I know that other areas have focused on employment and preparing individuals for getting employment and helping them sustain employment. I don't know anything specific about any of the other city programs. I've spoken with our juvenile intervention officers who have provided me. They've done a lot of wonderful work here in the last year that they've been around and they've located a lot of local resources here in town. One of those resources is the Way to Work Program that is actually sponsored here in the city of Wichita through the Housing Department. They have also, through some of their social media efforts, they have told me that many local businesses have reached out to them wanting to be a part of this and wanting to participate in offering jobs to youth in our community. So unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, I can't answer directly to what other cities have done in that respect, but I know that here in Wichita, we do have a lot of free resources that I think that we can leverage to get us to that goal.
It just, yeah, it seems like there might be an opportunity when we talk about job training and trying to get some of the positions full. Then this presentation would show is that we have a large percentage of young folks who might not know of these opportunities or that they would qualify. You know, it'd be interesting if we could see if there's, I guess, a precedence in other, or success in other communities on how to integrate this into, these opportunities into some of our diversion programs or other programs.
And that is certainly something that is part of our leadership committee that we can reach out to other communities, other agencies that have. We have a PSP partnership that has opened a lot of doors to other police agencies within our country. So we can research that and definitely try to even mimic some of those efforts.
Other questions and discussion?
Yes, thank you. Captain Stevens, thank you for the presentation. Very thorough and I appreciate the proactive approach that we're trying to attempt here. Just a couple of quick clarifying questions. On the notification, you mentioned that the family and the community. Does that include employer if there exists one with that individual? Or is it just the family?
In my opinion, flexibility is the key to this. As I alluded to, we can compel those who are on probation or parole to be at a place and time as a condition of that probation or parole. For those who don't fall into that category, then we have to be very flexible. And if we believe through our contacts with family that bringing in a pastor that may be influential or bringing in a mentor, and that may include a potential employer, whatever it takes to convince them that, you know, it's beneficial for them to be at the call-in. We want, because unfortunately, a lot of people distrust the police and they think that they may be walking into a trap. So we want to use whatever resources are available to us to help convey that message that we truly are here with an offering of help and services. So I think that is up to discussions that we will have in our committee meetings with the services and messaging committee on how they, on each individual level, they're going to have to figure out what resource to leverage to get that young individual to the call-in. I hope that answered your question.
It does. I guess I'm just cautious about employer relations and what identification may be or may not be rightly or wrongly and just, again, being very cautious in that. The second question is on the call-in session. Are those individual, private, or are those with groups of FDIs?
Those will be in group. Those are a group setting. And the way it really works is, I don't want to have it, you know, I don't know what the ideal number is, but you probably don't want to have more than 10 or so of them in there at a time. You don't want it to get so big that it's unmanageable. But a small group of individuals and it is a, it begins as a one-way communication. It's the law enforcement, the community members, and the service providers giving them the message. And it's not a two-way communication until after, when we begin the communication about service needs and facilitating services. And that's another thing we don't, when we're trying to facilitate these services, we don't want to overwhelm ourselves with too many at one time. I hope to have at least a call-in session monthly because we're going to have committee meetings monthly. And as we get better at this and more efficient, then we'll assess if we are able to expand the numbers that we call into our call-in meetings.
Had any of the examples that you looked at used individual sessions versus the group? Or did you see both?
So far, I've only seen the group sessions.
Okay, thank you.
Captain Stevens, is there a way to ensure that the program is not racial profiling when it is selecting candidates to be targeted?
And that's why we chose the, an evidence-based selection process. And we're using simple numbers to make the selections or at least to categorize the ranking on the list. And that is also why I've decided to redact names and identifying information about the individuals for presentation to the leadership committee. So that committee itself is making a blind selection. And what I've built into the program, since I will be on the leadership committee, I will not be a voting member, if you will, of that committee because I'll be the one bringing the list from the data and message, or the data enforcement committee to the leadership committee. So that is the best way that I think that we've been able to keep it evidence-based and to also keep it a blind selection process.
Thank you.
I have a few questions. Thank you, Captain. This is, I really appreciate the research that went into this. Do we have a sense of how many of these FDIs there will be at any one time that we'll have in this system?
I guess it depends on how many I ask, how far down in the ranking list I ask the crime linkage unit to, how big a list I ask them to produce, I guess. I'm thinking about starting with a list of 25. And then as we progress through the months, we may obviously produce larger lists and cross off the names that we've already brought in for call-in services. So I don't know, only time is going to tell how, you know, if we ever hit a wall of, or a, you know, a basement where we don't have any more to select. I don't know.
Well, that'd be great.
That would be, that would be opportune just to get to that point, yes.
That would be good. I just wondered how many you thought, 25 to start with to kind of see how you work out through the system?
We will start with 25 and do our best efforts to get as many of those into the first call-in.
And you know, sometimes it takes several asks or opportunities to get people to change behavior. So in this enforcement and service delivery, is there that kind of iterative process? If they don't take us up the first time to make a change in their behavior over time?
Yes, that is, that's a good question. And yes, if they do choose not to participate in the services and continue on the path of violence, if they do open up and decide that, okay, you guys, you know, law enforcement really did follow up on their promises, so now I'm ready to make a change in my life. There's nothing that says that we can't revisit that and funnel back into the services realm, if you will, yes.
So we'll provide them that opportunity more than one time?
Yes, flexibility is a key to this entire program. And I will, I'll kind of reference Kansas City Missouri Police Department. They gave us a presentation, a guy named Joe McHale, who developed that program there. And he cautioned me on not getting too set in our ways and designing a program and this is just the way it is. He assured me that over about the course of the first year, we're going to make a lot of different decisions, a lot of different minor changes based on how things are going and what suits the needs of our community. So I anticipate that we will have to be very flexible and maybe have to change a few things. We may have to change the age range if we decide at some point we need to.
And then I think this is my last question. The previous successes are quite good. And do we know, you know, some of those were back in the early 2000s. Do we know if that's been sustained, if their success rates have been sustained?
And in all honesty, here's the problem. A lot of these programs were not sustained. These successes were usually the first-year successes. And in my opinion, any success that you can get within a year is a great success if you can reduce violent crime. Unfortunately, the sustainability of a lot of these programs has been the shortcoming. There's a lot of reasons for that. Leadership changes is probably the number-one cause of the lack of sustainability for some of these programs. I read an 81-page article that I keep in my office because I want that to be a roadmap of what not to do. Because it did details. And it's one of these references that details some of the reasons that these programs have failed. Cincinnati was able to sustain theirs for 12 years, which is very, very good. Many have only lasted three to, maybe three to five years. So we are aware of that and I'm going to do the best I can to ensure that we try to learn from the lessons of others and keep it going.
Yeah, so I'm sure that, as you mentioned, there's multiple reasons, but I could see leadership change would do that because then leadership has a different emphasis or something else they want to focus on. So it's probably the sustainability comes from staying focused on this.
Yes, building, what I want to do is build it within the culture of our department to make it even more concrete than policy. To, you know, if I retire a year from now, that the next person is going to be able to pick up where I left off and sustain it.
Thank you.
So I had a few things, Captain. One, I appreciate the presentation and the work. And Chief did, Chief and I would talk about this before I was elected. But, so I know Officer Watson and Abadano. So this, I'm okay with this, but I know that there are some in the community that are concerned. So looking at the target age group, could you respond to some concerns about having law enforcement engage with them? This would actually bring them into the justice system rather than help them stay out?
Something that I have kind of noticed is that a large proportion of these kids are already in the system. A lot of them already fall into that on probation or parole category. So to that respect, many of them have already been exposed to the criminal justice system. In order to be selected as a candidate, they have already, you would, you have to have already been arrested or been a suspect in a great number of violent crimes. So a lot of these kids are already, are already there. So that's why, what I like about this program is that really what we're trying to do is identify who those kids are. The kids that are at most need of, of community support. And, and focus on them and get them integrated into the, the resources that they need. From talking to Officer Watson specifically and some of the work that he's done, he's been able to identify informally a lot of these kids. But this is more of a formal way of, of figuring out who really needs our help the most.
Right. Awesome. In this work, one of the slides talked about communication. So I just want to highlight, I, I agree with that. And I'd be willing to help with that. I, I think over the years, we've done a lot of great policy change and work, and we don't communicate that out enough. Or maybe even the details. One of the main things I probably shouldn't talk about because of ongoing litigation, but that, I think some of the successes there weren't communicated in a way that I think would have really benefited people. And Lieutenant Gilmore would tell me some of those successes, but I, I just would like to see us make sure we communicate that work out a little better, maybe more detailed and maybe in different spaces. And I'm, I'm happy to brainstorm, trying to get the word out on that because it's a lot of good work that I don't think gets out there enough. And then, so I, I was told about a loophole in purchasing weapons. And somebody who I was talking to in the community told me that a seventeen-year-old went to a gun show with cash, bought a weapon, and they saw it. And although they chastised the teenager, what are we gonna do about that? I know that state laws kind of leave some gray area, but I know we can be more restrictive than state law. Is there any way to address the ability of teenagers to take cash to a gun show to purchase a weapon? I don't know if that's considered legally. I would think not, but...
It is not legal for a seventeen-year-old to purchase a handgun at a gun show or any other place for that matter. It's unlawful for them to possess one. That is a question that, if you have any details, I'd certainly, if you could send me that, I, I could, I'd really like to have a discussion with our ATF partner about that because that, as you know, a lot of these gun shows are kind of travel state to state or within the state. And that is definitely an issue that, that needs to be addressed on maybe even the federal level for that reason. So if, if we could continue that conversation, I'd love to be able to share some details with our, with our ATF partners.
Yeah, I'll let you know everything they said. I know that this is public, so I don't want to get too detailed into it. But there, it was concerning what was shared with me. And then my last thing I'll say is, I really like the work of getting the young people into employment opportunities. Is there any way to connect to maybe more scholarship opportunities or pipeline into better employment? And I only say that because when I worked at a group home, when I would talk to young people who probably would be FDIs, one of the things that was always said to me is, why would I go work for seven-twenty-five an hour when I can go sell what I have and make a thousand dollars? And it was hard to push back on minimum wage. When I started to talk living wage, like twelve hours, twelve dollars an hour and above, that kind of helped out a little more. But then it was the question of, how do I get to that with the lack of skills? I don't, I can use some of this money to pay for those classes, but that wasn't always the opportunity. So are there ways to connect to that?
I believe there are. Like I said, I've had a lot of in-depth conversations with Avadano and Watson. And I mean, incredibly impressed with their, their ability to find resources here in the community and to leverage those resources. And I have no doubt that there has to be scholarship opportunities out there available. It's just a matter of, of us finding them and leveraging them correctly. I will definitely take that idea into my, into my notes and see what we can do for that.
Thank you.
This is an issue that we, we're talking about even separate from this program. We're gonna have, we have workforce challenges today. We'll continue to have them. And how we get young people trained and then, and fairly compensated so that we grow our own, so to speak, is, is an issue. Mayor's been involved in some recent discussions in that regard and with some of our significant employers. And I, I'll tell you, we're even experiencing that problem in our utility, for instance, and how we get people to fill those vacancies. So I think partnering with this program is just one more way of getting youth trained and into gainful employment, in this case with a real positive outcome.
Yeah. Well, the conversation with the mayor is actually why I said that. I just, it'd just be nice to find a way to, you know, I, I can't say guaranteed because you just never know, but almost guarantee that you take these steps and even if it's manual labor, being a machinist or, or something, you know, those are really good jobs. They can provide really great incomes and foundations for futures. It's just, I don't think some of our young people think about that in that way. But if they were able to see that they could, like what we did with the scholarship with WSU Tech, go here for eight weeks, learn this, and now you've got employment.
Well, a lot of times employers are willing to do the training onsite as well. I mean, we're, we're at that point now where it's important to get people into the pipeline.
There we go.
I just wanted to follow up and just to make sure for the community's awareness too is, it was mentioned about Way to Work, which is our housing program for youth employment. But before I was in council, I was part of a larger group called Youth Employment Project. And it is the city of Wichita Housing. It's also the Work Alliance of South Central Kansas, which is kind of leading the charge, the greater Wichita YMCA with their job prep program, have significant partnerships with Spirit and with Textron and others. And then also WSU Tech is at the table, so helping to, you know, hone job readiness skills and get youth in our community to start exploring what they may be interested in. So just want to make sure that everybody knows there's a group already working on it. So if there's more interest or anybody needs an additional information, just let me know. Thank you.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Other discussion? She just decided, I don't know if he was gonna get up and have a question, but you might be able to get through this without, without any, any tough questions. So thank you so much. We appreciate the presentation and look forward to getting the updates as the, the program moves forward.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, I'm wondering, the next item, it might be lengthy. Would it be beneficial if we took about a five-minute break so people can stretch their legs, possibly get a snack? All right, let's go ahead and break for about five minutes, come back to the bench, and we can get to the next, to the next item.
Doing a lot today, to talk about?
You and I, three items. Most of them talking about the cash. You want my card?
Thank you.
You can tell when Jared's in the office because all the Pepsi's are warm at the top because they had to restock them. All right, let's go and get started. Mr. Manager.
What do you want to talk about? Mayor, you have in front of you a revised draft that reflects some changes that were made as a result of your last workshop. Tried to record some requests by council members to have items inserted or changed. There are a few issues where there's questions where the council have not reached any consensus. And again, since you didn't vote on any of these items, I'm just putting them out there to record what was discussed. In addition, after the National League of Cities report was issued and after the workshop with the NLC representatives, there were some suggestions on how to change the plan. And so this also notes some changes reflective of the NLC recommendations. And then some of you have also submitted some items for consideration and those are appropriately noted as well. City Attorney Jennifer Magania asked for a few things to be changed or suggested some changes. Those are reflected as well for mostly they're clarifying items. Excuse me. So I'm not sure how you'd like to handle this, Mayor. It seems to me the easiest way is to go through the red marks. Red are additions or modifications. Blue are the strike-throughs, items that are recommended for deletion based on those meetings and recommendations from NLC.
We should probably start off by thanking you and staff. I think this is the fifteenth or sixteenth draft and really just a lot of common effort has gone through this with staff. So thank you for not only your work, but also the work that staff has gone through to ensure that the councils, that all of our changes are incorporated and that we come up with a product.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, if you'd like, I can start off the discussion because a few of these are reflective of NLC discussions. And then maybe allow the persons that are, that made suggestions, allow them to lead the discussion. And again, the goal for me is to try to get some direction from you on what you want included in the final document that will be presented on the fourth. Or if for some reason you wanted to delay that, you let me know. But right now we've been aiming for the May fourth meeting, so.
Of course, the goal is to have just a light discussion on this, so anyone can jump in and that's.
The first change has to do with referencing the city's values and primarily the trust values. And this came from, this is a recommendation of National League of Cities to make sure that the document is well-rooted in your value system. And so we decided to drop these items in. They're in an existing document. We've been talking about our mission and vision statement and values for several years. And so these are, these are the trust values that pertain to this document. So that's the first set of changes. I'm going to take silence as permission to move on then, okay? The second one.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Real quick, because the last sentence in that section says that the formerly adopted later would be the code of conduct, campaign finance policy and social media policy. So are we going to review those individually following this at a later date?
I was headed to that next.
Okay.
I was just talking, my first comments were just on the respect, ethics, stewardship, integrity engagement.
Sorry, jumped it.
So the next paragraph was also recommended by them. And I think what National League of Cities tried to say was, don't do too much in the code of ethics. Do, come back with campaign finance if you, if you believe that's appropriate. Or code of conduct because there were some code of conduct issues that had been addressed and/or a social media policy. And those, we would work through with you on one or more of those if that's what you want to do next or further down the road.
Okay.
Bob, will you still help me understand the categorization of code of ethics versus code of conduct? Is one enforceable, one's not, is one recommendation? I'm still fuzzy on the definition.
It's just, it's just the subject matter dealt with in the document. They would be equally enforceable, although a code of conduct would be primarily enforced by the council among itself, right? You wouldn't have some independent group. And normally a code of conduct pertains to actions that are taking place at the time, right? I mean disrespect shown at a council meeting, one council member to another or something like that. But it can be broader than that, too. And it could be your relationships, well, I don't want to speculate or give my own judgment of what a code of conduct would be. Let me see if there's specific language that is, came from National League of Cities. I'm not sure, council member, that I have a good definition of a code of conduct from them. It's just a reference to those being separate policies.
The reason I ask is I looked up the definitions myself several times, Googling it. And I, I really couldn't find any definitive difference in the code of conduct versus the code of ethics.
Okay, I'm sorry, I do have it here. It's. A code of conduct may apply to different populations representing the city, including elected officials, members of boards and commissions, and all or individual city employees. Depending on the code of conduct's goal, it may live within an ethics code or a standalone section, which is what they recommend. It's a set of rules and procedures agreed to by the board's members. Codes of conduct most closely mirror an aspirational code by enumerating how officials of the city shall conduct themselves. However, unlike an ethics code, a code of conduct is focused more on civility and decorum and less on moral decision-making. Many local legislative bodies have chosen to adopt a code of conduct or guidelines and norms to help prevent divisive rhetoric from seeping into their business. Code of conduct helps ensure that elected officials' behavior sets a positive tone for the business conducted in their chamber. Additionally, some documented rules and procedures spell out the general rules of conduct for members of the public wishing to address the body. The goal is to integrate civility, decorum, and effective governance into the legislative, legislative body's culture. This helps ground the council's work and their shared values, a commitment to the city and public service. That's how National League of Cities talks about it. And then it talks about how you establish and enforce a code of conduct.
I guess I still struggle. If you're dealing with an issue, what bucket does it go in?
So if it'd be helpful, they said typical elements of a code of conduct may include: Communicate respectfully, participate fully and come prepared, always be respectful, courteous, and civil. All for discussion before a decision and avoid formal motions until the debate has concluded. Respect the role of elected officials and staff, model teamwork, disagree respectfully. It's aspirational in nature. So that's what they list as examples of what you would put in the code of conduct. Okay, all right, thanks, all right. So at some point, we will need direction on whether all of these are documents you want to look at in the future. And if we want to modify that, we can take out any document that you don't want to see coming forward in the future. Next one came forward, I think this is from Councilmember Frye, wanting better definition of what a business entity was. And so this is a definition that ties back to our, our previous rules governing what you have to report for having a business, a stake in a business or business interest. So, and that's all I have on this page. The next one is cyberbullying. And that was a recommendation from National League of Cities that that be incorporated into a code of conduct or if you don't go in that direction, into a social media policy. It would be more appropriate in a code of conduct based on the definitions I just gave you.
So will we be passing, will we be looking at voting for that, for that at the same time? Is this all encompassing?
Well, we don't have a code of conduct or a social media policy in front of you now.
So then why wouldn't we just include it with what we have now rather than putting it into something that we don't have?
Right, I don't want to get in defense of what National League of Cities recommended. But they recommended it was more appropriate in a broader code of conduct that dealt with how you, how you have a relationship among each other and with staff and with the public.
But if we don't have that, I think now's the time to have it in there.
But we do have a social media policy as it relates to HR and employment, correct?
We, our social media policy primarily applies to staff, not to council.
Okay.
And it doesn't address an issue like this. It primarily focuses on misuse of social media and how you represent yourself. But more importantly, what you should and shouldn't do on city equipment and on city time.
I got you, okay.
But that can easily be broadened, take in issues like this. And also to then bring in elected officials if you want that involved. So at least we have a baseline document to start with in that regard.
Well, I'm not comfortable giving that up.
The next item is one that I think all of you were scratching your heads on during the last workshop. And that is what the definition of friend should be. So I just simply bring this back for your consideration, for your discussion.
So I will say that our district advisory board, a considerable amount of time was spent on friend versus individual with undue influence. And I don't think we came up with a solution to the definition. But I thought the conversation around somebody with undue influence was interesting because a friend can tell me something I may not care about, but is there someone who has more influence? I think that was a discussion. I don't know if I'm helping this discussion. Just bringing up what was said, because it's the definition here, I don't know. Frequent social interaction, I might have that with somebody I'm not necessarily a friend with, so I don't know. I guess that's why this is so confusing.
And I think the vice mayor brings up a good point. The ethical issue isn't having friends, it's more focused on undue influence. Or descend to a very interesting, do we need a definition of friend? For this policy? Or if it's not so much friends, more of influence, we have referenced undue influence.
Serving the role as provocateur, I will say. Council, or Vice Mayor Johnson and I had an interesting discussion about this after the dab. What's definition of undue influence?
Right, true.
If someone calls you and pushes you on an issue, is that undue influence? Or is that just someone voicing their opinion regarding policy? The only discussion I've seen of undue influence that seem to make some sense doesn't normally reside in a code of ethics. It does in campaign finance. Because the idea in concept is that though, those who donate significantly have access that is greater than what an average citizen would have. So I see it sometimes limit, you know, you see limits on the amount of donations allowed, you know, the dollar amount. So that every person has the ability to play at that level.
Bob, have you tried to define undue influence in this document?
No, no one asked me to.
Let's not spend too much time on it then. Yeah, I think, I think, yeah.
I guess I'd like to talk about this a little bit because I've been thinking about this. And I think this definition is troublesome because who gets to define frequent? You know, does that mean someone you see every week? Someone you, socially, every month? Three times a month? You know, I don't know, I don't know what that means and who, and if we're going to ask a chair and advisory board to make those determinations, I could see seven different, eight different, right, with the chair, the way it's proposed. I could see eight different interpretations of what frequent means. And then I think back about people that I have had frequent social interaction with before I was on council. So does this count my high school and college friends who I don't really see anymore? I still consider them friends, but I don't spend social time with them. Or friends from early in my marriage or friends before I was on city council. I just, I'm, I'm struggling with this in terms of who gets to define that once we pass this, if we leave this in here.
And council member, I just, I think I share some of your concerns. I think the, trying to define friend is somewhat of a holdover from the last policy that we seek to update. And my, my concern also stems from F on our statement of policy, which is avoid conflicts of interest by referring from participating in decisions or being involved in transactions in which officials, their family, friends, or business entities have an interest. I mean, I, I don't think we're trying to define what family is. I think that, you know, by defining friends, we also are creating maybe a box.
Yeah, but we do define family in relatives. Yeah, if, I think if we, I mean, my concern is if we have friends in there, then it has to be defined. In my opinion, others might not agree, and I understand that. But I, if I'm going to be held to that, do I get to define who my, who is counted as a friend? When it, if something is a, you know, comes up as, I don't anticipate being in violation of this. But if someone decided to file something against me and said, oh, you're a friend with them. And it's like, I don't consider them that kind of a friend that could have influence on my decision.
And I, I think you're actually, I think that actually grew my understanding of this. A relative is actually much more defined. I think that, if I'm hearing you right, the word friend, there's other way to try to find it. There's, you can't really define it by just interacting. And I think that's what we're trying to do. So I, I'm just wondering if, and I'm just going to throw this out there. What if we struck the, the definition of friend from the document and then, you know, it, do we need to define it or not? Or do we need to strike, I, I, just throwing this out there, what?
Yeah, I think the council member's point, though, is if you're going to define family and you're going to define business interest, then you, if you're going to include friends in item F, you have to define friends.
Yeah, or take it out of that.
Or take it out.
Which I don't think that's the point of this discussion either.
Right, no, but, and I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. I didn't mean to cut you off, I'm sorry. My, there is a, a, um, a standard of what defines family. Someone you're related to is a third party or subjectivable, subjectivable standard of what is a business. Or what is a, a relative. And I think what they, and if I understand the council member right, there really isn't like a subjectivable standard of a friend, as that word means, different things in different contexts. So I, I'm just trying to further the discussion. But I, I just wanted to convey that I understand the council member's concern and, well, during the discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the beauty of a town like Wichita. There's a one degree of separation, I think, all of us have with practically everybody in this town. And so that definition of friend is going to be very hard to get to.
Could, could we potentially, this might be a terrible idea, but maybe strike the term friend and change it to influencer?
Change it to?
Influencer?
Influencer? And then are we going to define influencer? I just.
There is a. There is a, an idea of, because I agree that not everyone who's a friend has undue influence. And not everyone we're friendly to is a friend or we consider a friend. However, if I could build upon the vice mayor's thought, there, there might be language in that, we have, we have, if I get back to my, I guess, my before life as a legislator, there was language that separated a lobbyist versus like a concerned citizen. And on the face, it seems like if someone's asking for something, there's a, you know, an individual's asking for something, it's the same. But there was language about, you know, that separated the two. And I think this kind of reminds me of that where not everyone who asks you. And I think this kind of reminds me of that, where not everyone who asks you, you know, the folks who come in last week and ask us to expand bike lanes, I don't think I consider them like lobbyists, right? Like, that's not undue influence, but someone who might be exchanging gifts and has a real investment in, I guess, changing policy, that's a different level. So perhaps if we talk about influencer, could we utilize some of the language that changes, I mean, that we could find in some of the lobbyist type language used at the state level? There might be some inspiration from that, I guess.
I guess I've brought up some issues with Bob on this, too. Sometimes you don't know that someone's asking you for something, you know? Someone's spending time with you and it's several months before, oh, by the way, I'm asking you for something and.
That's a good point.
I'm sure most of you have had that happen.
Yeah, and sometimes that when they start interacting with you, they don't, they don't have a project.
Yeah.
You know, it's.
So now you're my friend and you're asking
Yeah.
me for something that neither one of, you know, maybe they didn't know it either.
Yeah.
So I want to get back to the, the problems we seek to address with this. And I don't think friends are a problem. I do think that, and this is a policy, not a marriage, right? Which means we can go back and make changes, and we are looking to take that step forward. And I think that some of the discussion from the last workshop was to bring it back and to ensure that we iron out any wrinkles. So with that, I mean, what, what would be the harm to go through the whole document and strike the word friend at this point? I mean, would that move us on? Like, I don't want to throw out the baby or the bathwater.
I think that would, and that would allow us time then to look at over the next year, has that become an issue for this body? And if it has, then we have to come back and revisit the term friends.
Or influencer, or.
Or, yeah, or something.
Whatever we're trying, because I think we're trying to encompass something narrow with this terminology, but we all are in agreement, this is something wider, or it can be interpreted wide. And thus it opens us up a little bit to unintended consequences. So I, I mean, I'm open to you can, or be open to what I hear is the suggestions of continuing this, this particular item and the conversation of it. If we struck friend from all this doc, this entire document, I think we still, there's nothing exclusive to friendship, that isn't the problem we're trying to solve here. I, I don't, I think that the main, I don't think a change of context of the document might actually clean it up a little bit. But I would defer to the expertise of our brilliant staff. Bob, you guys head down, I don't want to jump into this. You have any input?
I was just looking at the definitions of undue influence.
Okay. Bob's down a rabbit hole of
Yeah, pretty much.
natural league of city links.
Okay. If that's what you like to do, then we can surely do that. I'm okay with that.
So we're okay with just striking the word, we'll strike the section friend, and, and strike the, I think, where is it? I think it's an F where we have friend, and then we can just ask staff anywhere else the word. Friend is in there, we can actually strike family instead. But yeah, so staff should be doing this, not me.
We'll do that, we'll, we'll eliminate that, the references to friend.
Excellent.
Okay.
I did want to ask here on the, on the definitions, I think we put in there the business entity, any corporation partnership, proprietorship, joint trust, in which either the official or his or her spouse has legal or equitable interests of $5,000 or 5%, which is less. Is, would that be, would that include like a spousal salary? Would it include a spousal's retirement from one of those companies? I mean, just, I'm, I'm thinking just like Councilman Claycomb thinks, you know, well, if it's something you're be asking, well, this is for future councils is what I'm thinking about. How's a future council gonna, gonna interpret these definitions?
Yeah, I'll ask Jennifer, because these are the requirements that you already have that you must, that you have to report annually. So I just lifted the language.
Yeah, that's our substantial.
Yeah, jumping into that, that is one piece of the, of the statutory Kansas statute definition of substantial interest. There are definitions based on your business interest, or, or salary compensation, or gifts of services or goods. So that is one way that the state law defines it. That's not the only way, but that is one way.
But not retirement packages?
The state law doesn't say that, it just.
Yeah, that's another part of our substantial interest form. I just filled mine out, that's why.
Yeah.
Why it's top of mind.
So would that be categorized in this or not?
Would what?
Under this document?
Would, would the retirement? If it's, and, you know, legal equitable interest, I don't, I think.
I'll use myself for example. I have a pension coming from Textron more these days. Should I not be voting on Textron issues?
That would not fall into.
No, because you don't have an interest in the business entity.
Yeah, you don't have equitable interest.
Right, right. That's different.
And I'm wondering if, because this discussion's interesting, because the substantial interest form is actually part of the Kansas Ethics Commission that we fall under when it comes to really campaign finance, with the, the smaller side that we fall under. And I think that we need to be looking at this document in, in harmony with Kansas Ethics and also with, you know, the DA, right? Like, not in its own, not in a vacuum as it's all encompassing. But, so something like that to, when it comes to substantial interest, we would already have a resource to ask those type of questions, too. Which makes me wonder if we needed, and maybe not, but, no, yeah, so I, I don't think we need any clarification that there's two different. But maybe as we move forward and understand that this works in harmony with, doesn't supersede the current state statute.
Council member, if I can follow up, I just want to say the state statute, when it talks about substantial, has a specific section for compensation. I think your question would fall under that section, which is in the state law. I don't see it included in this version of our ethics document. But to the state law, I think it would count as the compensation provision.
Clear as mud. We're ready to move on. At your last workshop, under relatives, you asked family member to be submit, or to be, to replace the word relative for clarification. That's it on page two. On page three, Jennifer suggested that we define what a one, what the specific one-year period is, which was nebulous in the first, in the last round. Also suggested, and this also came from the National League of Cities, in addition to Jennifer, that the yearly report be filed with the city clerk. And then at the workshop, there was a request that the report be filed, even if you receive no gifts, just to recognize that fact. There's nothing on any of that.
I do have a technical question on that, because we won't cover that last paragraph on page three. So on the gifts, that last paragraph talks about a gift not authorized. And I wanted to know where would gifts like the former mayor and I received from the queen mother who came over, she gave us both bracelets, I don't know how much that cost, over there, would that be something that would need to be disclosed? I'm assuming it was less than $50, but do you disclose that? It's not something that I could give to the city treasurer? So how would something like that be addressed?
Just ask them how much it's worth when they give it to you.
That's not tech.
Hey, can I see the receipt for this?
Paul, shut up.
I mean, maybe if there's a language where, and I don't know, something, and I'm pretty sure that the bonus of having this is that you, we would have a officer to ask that question to. And I think some of this is going to be really obvious that it's less than 50 bucks, right? And then some, it might, you know, you might not know, you accidentally took something, turns out the toothbrush was made of Bitcoin, and now it's, you know, worth a ton of money, now you have to figure out where to donate it. I mean, but that's the, I do want to just kind of put that out, where some of the guidance on this, the goal of this policy is to actually really have a resource to help us with those type of questions, to make sure that people on the up and up. I know that's the main function of the Kansas Ethics Commission, is answering those type of questions.
So to that point, maybe without changing this, can that be a question that gets asked to the board once formed? Because I do want to know, like, what the thought process would be on something like that.
Sure, I, I think it's pretty straightforward right now. Using your example, you would do is submit a, a form that says, I received a bracelet from a visiting dignitary named with an unknown value. And it's that simple, but you've met the reporting requirement. It's, and, and, yeah, and that's the important thing, is it's on the record then, right? I mean, I think that's what you're getting at in this.
That's true.
Yeah, disclosure is kind of king on this.
Right.
The, but yeah, I mean, I will, not that Bob's not doing a great job, but I would love to have someone focused on these issues who, you know, can give us advice if it ever came up, where, you know.
And the deletion on Q is consistent with the definition change, deletion on cyberbullying. I think you've already had a discussion about that, so.
Hey, can I go, I just want to go back to Jay for a minute, and I don't know if we need this in this policy, but we'd like there to be a reminder to us to file that, so maybe it's, you know, because, anyway, just.
I prefer not to put administrative items like that in the policy.
We'll have it in process, thank you. Okay, sorry.
And then, down to the exceptions, during the workshop, you indicated that you wanted to talk more about this issue of food. And I think there's still some confusion regarding not-for-profit events and those that are in this line, whether or not this line applies to nonprofit events or other events that you've been asked to attend. So because of that confusion, I've put it in here just to recall your attention to it.
So I have a question on this one, to get down, to get down into the weeds. Where, in the second paragraph, if you, all we'll look where it says, mayor and council members may attend events hosted by these organizations in which their presence is requested. And then you can be compensated for food and admission to the event. There are a couple of ways that, that this happens, I think. One is that sometimes the nonprofit itself asks us to attend, but there are other times when the nonprofit leaves it up to their board members or their benefactors to, for example, buy a table and then invite a council member. And I wanted to make sure that that is somehow addressed, that we, that, that we make sure that we don't put anyone, a nonprofit, in an uncomfortable position by asking us to attend.
So, and I think that, and that's a really good point. I think that the, this is in concert, what's the right word, with the idea that there, we're not paying to attend. So it would be, and I think the current language, and not default to the council, of course, we need to add more to it, but presence is requested, it's not saying that the nonprofit itself is requesting our presence, but we are attending the nonprofit. So, but I understand exactly what you're saying, where if, you know, let's say, Wichita State buys a table and they, they offer you a seat, then I think that this includes that.
Okay.
In my interpretation.
I do, too. Yeah, I do, too. I just want to make sure that my fellow council members interpreted it that way.
And, and I certainly don't want to complicate this more again, we can, you know, keep getting this muddier and muddier, but I, and I haven't brought this up before, and I apologize for that, but the situation just arose this weekend where my husband works for an organization that purchases lots of tables to support non-for-profit organizations. And so I go with him and the capacity of a spouse, but you're always a council member, right? But I'm not going as a council member. So, I mean, and I think, I mean, probably that happens 10 times a year for us. Or because he's on boards, we go to events and we go for free or, you know, whatever because of his role. And so I'm not sure it needs to be in here, it might be something to, you know, hammer out later, but as with almost all of this, there's very little black and white, there's lots of gray. But that's just, I mean, literally this weekend, my husband said, can you go now? And I said, I think so, but just checking. So that's going to be another thing that we might need to, if we don't do it now, that's fine, but hammer out in the future. Because I'm, I'm not unique, there's other folks who will have the same scenario.
Right. And I think that, you know, their presence is requested, your presence is requested, whether it's as in the role of spouse or in the role of council member. So to me, it would fall under there also.
Okay, so you're good with the language as it is? Okay. Page four, I'm going to let the mayor work through this. It's a change in the Ethics Advisory Board and how it is comprised, how, who can serve on it. And so with that, I'll turn it over to you, mayor. And also, the city attorney worked on the language to codify, so to speak, the mayor's intents.
Yeah, and I just want to be clear, it wasn't so much, my intent was to capture the intent of the council when we had the discussion last time. And, yeah, I, I went back through, and I gave everyone a, somewhat of a brief to, to make sure that we approached this kind of all on the same page. But one thing that wasn't in the brief was a, just, I guess, where some of this language came from, when it came to the, I think, the qualification section. I was, I utilized, I think it was Tulsa and also Kansas City, Kansas, they're, they have a, they have a pretty good policy. And that's, so just so folks know, that's where that part came from. It was, I'm trying to figure out, you know, what is the subjectable standards? And luckily, staff somewhere in my email actually had these all there, so was able to pull that out and throw this together for discussion.
So I had maybe one question, one suggestion on number four, under the Ethics Advisory Board.
Yes, M should be capitalized, yes, that was big catch.
What does nor an active member of a political party mean? So we take out the precinct committee people, because those are elected folks, but what is, is that active like volunteer of the year, or?
Yeah, that, that I think is the intent, is the idea that, I mean, precinct committee people, and this is one of the reasons why, you know, I'm really glad that council kind of suggested this, because it absolutely changed my perspective of this. I thought the randomization process, you'd be less likely to get someone who is more biased towards a party or active towards a party, which, you know, rather they perform the duties of an ethics role well or not, there might be that, I guess, concern that they were biased going in. The goal is to take out that, that idea that someone is biased going into one of these meetings. So I think it's, the easy stuff is elected office, precinct committee people, but then we also within parties have appointed offices, we have caucuses, we have, what else have we got, Brandon? We got, I mean, vice mayor? We got a bunch of other organizational positions, national committee man, I mean, stuff that really shows that you're the type of person who shows up on a beautiful Saturday to a meeting with ideological folks, right? And it's an attempt, I guess, to ensure non-bias, non-partisanship move again. So I would interpret that as including, including like the chair of, of a party and the officers.
Yeah. Okay. Well, so I guess my thought, maybe we don't add all of that in here, but in some way define that for when the appointment process happens, just, because I looked at that, like, what does, what does that mean? That makes sense when you have different caucus groups and all of that, are you a part of that? And then the only other thing on number seven, having no conflict of interest, would there be a suggestion at some point if, looking at business entities, would have someone Would there be a suggestion at some point if looking at business entities would have someone starts one? So they're serving, you know, on this board. Maybe they're a year and a half in, have some bright idea that ultimately could potentially do business with the city or or something like that. So at that point, a disclosure of the business and resign because this is saying they can't be a part of it. Okay. That's all I have. I like this section.
I'm a little confused on number four. Is that something that you're going to try? Do you want us to try to define, or is that something that will be determined by in consultation with the ethics officer or something like that?
Well, I think now that it has been stated kind of where that was going, it could be defined by the ethics officer.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure we had thought about that.
And then that moves you into the second change, and that is the creation of the ethics officer position, which was, uh, I think, previously the Advisory Board Chair. And uh so this is a a different process um for the selection of this person.
Yeah, and not just the selection of the person, um which is actually a really better process than I think the original. But also switching to officer really highlights, I I think, the fact that we don't think this committee will meet. Um, unless it's it's a normal gathering, right? Like unless they're just scheduled to meet and and discuss. Uh, so a chair is someone who has to run a meeting. We found out that Dallas-Fort Worth, which is one of our cities we are often compared to, uh, and influenced by, they haven't had a a had to resort to, I guess, a a advisory board or a ethics advisory board meeting in like fourteen years. Uh, so the officer, I I I think the, not just the selection, but also some of this language to kind of highlight this person is more of a resource, more will be more um, you know, making some of the uh guidance calls uh so that people and people will, uh, some of the questions that were asked, get some guidance with that. But just to overview the creation of it, uh, it it really takes from a bit of the precedents for elect when we did the appointments for the committee who will select a judge, but also uh when we selected um the a district, the District Three Councilmember where uh every the the group itself would be able to submit names to the council and then uh, you know, so none of us get are are appointing the officer. The officer will be uh the officer's names would be forwarded by a a group of folks who was appointed, who are what we believe are experts in this area. And then we would um go through, vet, and then select one of them among up to three names.
So I have a few questions if it's okay for moving on to, I guess, page six. Is that okay? Okay, so my first question, and I'm sorry if I've missed this, but I tried to look at it. Does the ethics officer vote? There's seven folks. If the ethics officer votes, that's an eight-member body, and you could have a tie.
So a very good question. Uh, and and I had to, and hopefully made it into this draft, but um uh, the the ethics officer uh it does not have a vote. They chaired the meeting. They do not have a vote unless in the event of a tie. Now, we all think, well, how could it be there be a tie? I think a tie will come up if there was some type of conflict and one of the ethics members uh chose to exclude themselves, or if uh someone couldn't make it, uh that so only in the rarest occasions to break a tie with the ethics officer vote. And by having them be a non-voting member, uh, in my opinion, also more so solidifies their their role as a re- as a resource where um, you know, their job is more to uh i- is less to pick a side, but more to be a resource, not just for us, but also to the um the board, if it was ever to be called and put into action.
I and I'm fine with that. I just think it needs to be defined because five years from now, you know, how things just kind of change and it's it's not clear.
It's in the last line of duties.
Sorry. Just want to make sure. Um, so and then I just wanted to talk really quickly and again, just to make sure I understand. So the seven-member board will interview and select no less than one, but no more than three names for the council to consider to be the ethics officer. Okay, so then we will get to interview or otherwise vet the candidates and select the ethics officer by rank choice. So I'm assuming that means we'll have a little bit of time in there, right, so that we can meet with all the candidates, the one, two, or three candidates. So just to make sure I understand when it says rank choice, is that the same process as we just went through when we were um filling? No, it's like, okay. Just want to make sure I understand.
I'll let the mayor and vice mayor address it.
Yeah, I'll defer to the vice mayor more um about rank choice and and the value of it in this situation, but I think the I think you're right.
I don't, I'll be honest right now, like, rank choice isn't something that I completely understand what that means.
So if you have three candidates, you rank them in order, your first, your second, and third.
A- a- and that point I I get. I mean, but we could still get to some sort of wonkiness where maybe, I don't know, could it's could it ever work out then that there's people who tie?
Well, not only that, you by this, there could only be one candidate. And then do we have to take that one?
Oh, we should put that in there.
Right.
We don't have to.
I mean, does the council have a right of adding another person to the mix if there's only one? Or do we have a right of refusal if we don't like the only candidate that the board pushes through?
So the way, and and that's a good question. I I mean, I think couple of discussion, uh, question discussions here. I think first, uh, um the idea of the rank choice, I believe, doesn't result in any type of, it's be tough to result in a tie, and if it does, I guess we'd do another ballot. The but the goal was to not have it come down to like a coin flip, like what of other?
Yeah, that's perfect.
And and that's why that got in there. Um, but the uh, as far as the names and the way, I think the way the judges are selected there was similar process for a Supreme Court. Um, the if three names are presented and none are chosen, or the governor has the choice to reject all three and have them do it again. But the goal with this al- also is to kind of take the council out of out of the equation when it comes to a- asking them to consider someone, right? Like out of the appointment equation, but we could add add a but to 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 your comment, we could add a comment where um if if all three names are are unaccepted by the council, then the uh board will be asked to submit one to three additional names.
And I just have one more comment, just so we don't get it lost, if that's okay. Um, it says that the that who we appoint is for two years, but the term of the ethics officer is four years. And I'm just concerned that four years is a really long term. Um, I I could see somebody maybe qualified not being interested because they don't understand the complete scope of work. I would be okay with even saying that, you know, it's a two-year term and they could re- be reappointed more times. But I I just worry that having a four-year term is is too long for an individual to maybe to commit to. Just my last thought. Thank you.
The uh, in in good cor- I mean, good good discussion, Paul, and I I don't, it doesn't matter to me which way we go with this one. I but let me just explain, I guess, the background with the four years. The 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 um the standard was that I that I found in my research uh what was a a different, what was four years versus two years, or sometimes members were elected for or appointed for four years, but the chair usually had a longer term, and I thought that was to allow, uh, if there's turnover, to allow better uh better, I I guess, handoff of of the duties. Uh, and it reminded me of the discussion we had with the uh with the diversity and inclusion of our rights board, where we had a very lengthy discussion about um, what was it? About a staggered staggered uh term, so that we you have that that uh institutional knowledge that could could uh stick around. I I do want to point out that if someone was in a four-year term, could only serve two years and resigned, uh, we would go through this process to get a new person. Uh, so you know, that kind of joke where it's it's not a marriage, it's an appointment, as I got to get folks who are busy to be appointed, where if it turns out to be too much, then obviously we we would want you to resign um so that, you know, it it wouldn't conflict too much. Uh, so that was the the intention behind it, but a- again, I'm open to really whatever the council thinks.
You, the the spot can be renewed, correct? Like if it went two years, then I mean, I think it'd be beneficial to have that opportunity in two years because.
Well, right now, the language says reappointment for one additional term, so whatever years we would have. Unless we change that language, it's just you can serve two terms as chair.
So currently, they could be serving eight?
Yeah.
I would suggest you do a two-year with the ability to reappoint and just leave it blank in terms of how often you do that. Officers are different than the the people on the board. I understand if someone's doing a good job in providing the kind of advice you want, then you want continuity that crosses the board lines, but if for some reason you're not getting satisfaction, you're reviewing it every two years.
And that's a really good point. I mean, we might get some old professor who's really great at this, is doing it kind of as a, you know, academic service to us, and we would be at a loss if if just we just wound up, you know, having an artificial term limit for someone like that. So uh, in in frankly, like like I I think the council have mentioned before, if if we do two years and find out, you know, everyone's serving four years, and as this comes up yearly to review, uh, you know, decide to change it, that 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 always can happen, but does is there any real objection to dropping that to two years, or that make council feel better? And if so, can we also, I guess, strike the um the uh for one additional four-year term and just keep it at with the option for reappointment?
Yeah.
Is there any?
I I what I did was the term for this appointment is two years with the option for reappointment for additional two-year terms.
Did you say term or terms?
Terms.
Okay.
I just think I just think it needs to be more consistent, like what we do with our DABs and our other positions, so that there is terminology and expectations consistent across the spectrum.
That's why I put the two-year term, so yeah.
That's cross that's crossing a T. Very good.
I do apologize. I I'm not sure I understand my direction on the issue of the council if they aren't satisfied with the nominee nominee.
On the selection process.
Yes, yes.
Do we want the option to reject the names and ask for new names?
I think we need some kind of off-ramp. I mean, especially if we get through the vetting process and none of them flesh out, then we're kind of stuck. Well, we've already got a policy, since we got to name one of these.
Okay, so I'll I'll put something in there that allows you to return to ask the the board for additional nominees.
That's, yeah, and that's consistent with the standard at the state level for for judges too, so it's consistent with.
So to Councilmember Fry's concern, uh, which I had not considered on the selection, um, since they can do one but no more than three, would it would you feel more comfortable, or would it be better to just say they can do no less? No less than, or had just define three, like they have to give us three names to choose from, so it's not pushing through one person, or?
My thought was, and and I won't put anything, but yeah, the reason why was they should select someone and then thought or up to three, right? Like, um, but there might just be one person who applies. That's it. It was like, what if the chair of the American Bar Association, the Kansas Bar applies and wants to do this as a service, and then other people don't apply? Uh, so that's why I I had that language that was a little more flexible, but it's really up to the
That makes sense.
Council.
Okay, if and so if you're satisfied then with where we are, then the next paragraph after the the new section on ethics officer, you know, deals with the possibility of of levying of a fine. And at your last workshop, there was a discussion about the fine may not be paid by another party if if it's levied.
So is is this out of order? Should that be part of the procedures instead of here? Should it follow the process for submitting allegation and the process? I mean, it feels out of place right here.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point. So um you're saying move this section to the part of?
Under the procedures?
Yeah, for if it will, if it got to that. Yeah, that that also, I mean, I think it's clear, but that even clarifies it more that the only way to get to that fine is when it goes to that extreme, which is having that.
Yeah.
I do want to just, since I I'm talking, um, just have the floor, just to, I I love this amendment from Councilmember Tuttle uh that is talks about how, you know, if there ever is a fine, it goes into ethics education. I think that's that's uh really gets to, you know, what we we want, right? Like, the ability to have uh workshops with with thought leaders about uh training on coma, training on um, you know, say, uh, up to date with with the best practices uh as elected officials and uh hopefully, no one will ever be fined, but if they are having a pot of money that goes towards uh spreading that education, I think is an amazing idea. That made me steal your thunder if you're going to speak to it.
Well, I was going to say, if you love me for that, you're going to love me for three more, but just just to give tr- do praise, um, my biggest concern was where would the money go if there was? And and Bob was the one who suggested to me the ethics education, so kudos goes to Bob for that. But again, I know it's kind of beating a dead horse and we need to dismount at some point, but um just had a few more questions regarding the fine that didn't resonate with me until, um, again, looking it over again, but um, it it, how long does someone have to pay? I- is it thirty days? Is it six months? Because then it says if they don't pay, they go to public censure. So if somebody's close to the end of their term limit, they could just say, okay, I'll I'll take the censure, right? And or and also a very realistic comment is that most of the community may not know that this is considered a halftime job and that we have a pretty low income level as council members. I know compared to some in the community, this would not be considered low income, but um, many of us take shifts in our life to be able to do it, to be a public servant. And so what if somebody just can't pay? I mean, they literally don't have a hundred, five hundred, a thousand dollars in their personal finances. Is there an option for community service, or do they automatically just go to the public censure? A- again, I might be getting too much into the weeds, but just kind of thinking of past council members who maybe couldn't pay five hundred dollars. They just wouldn't have the money.
Maybe they have something of value, like a bracelet they got.
That's actually all right, that was funny. And man, Bob had a joke today, Fry has a joke, like uh, the uh, that's actually a really good idea. Could we put in a because because I I think that problem could arise where it is isn't about punishment, it's about just pretty much uh corrective behavior. What if we did instead of in lieu of a hundred or a thousand dollars, also um uh appropriate community service hours or equivalent community service hours? And I'm not sure, we can let the board decide how they figure that out. Maybe it's minimum wage times the amount to get up to what the fine is or something, but if we did a a offer community service hours in a way to kind of, I don't know, work it off, that's not a that's not a bad idea. It kind of follows the precedence that a lot of um that a lot of other uh
Bob, this is a The Kansas, the Kansas Real Estate um Commission, you know, I've noticed through the years any ethical violations, it's usually always dealt with with ethical training.
Right.
And I would like to see us go down that avenue more than than the fine, because I think the the tr- the training or, you know, go to these classes or go to that is going to do you better than, the public shame is going to be the embarrassment here. It's not, it's not going to be the thousand dollars to your pocketbook. Although I understand what you're saying, it could be difficult for some people, but.
Yeah, I don't know that you haven't lost your ability to do a censure either, right?
Right.
As a body?
And to be honest, the way the censor, so a couple of things. First off, I I think Councilmember Blue Box is right, uh, where and and later, and it's kind of goes to Councilmember Friday and right, a lot of people are right up here on this bench, where this might be in the wrong section because I think that in the other section, there is a reference to 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 education and how we want that to be the primary tool where oh, you didn't do your form right, so we're going to ask you to to go read up how to do the form. Uh, but also, uh when it comes to
It it's in this section, Mayor, but it's it's, I think, I think Councilmember Fry is right. I think they should go under procedures away from here, but it does talk about as an alternative to levying a fine, the board may also require training or issue a public censure.
I think the American Bar Association does the same, and that's pretty good precedent set by realtors and lawyers. But oh, with the public sensor, what I was going to say is failure to pay these fines will result in a public censor. Versus it should say could result, I guess, um, because a public censure requires a vote. So, you know, this can't dictate a censure of.
Actually, I think, I think this references a censure issued by the board.
Oh, by the board, okay.
Yeah, this is referencing the Ethics Board doing it. But even that should be a vote.
Well, they would have to meet again, and who knows if they would. Do we wanna keep that line or we wanna just scratch that line? Cause the council can always vote. If a member goes through this process, doesn't follow through the process, doesn't have a really good reason or anything, we could also take it up as a, of reprimand, cause we have a series of stuff we could do, uh, as well. Do we need that part in there? It's kind of a public censure already, if you get fined, so.
It's really up to you to decide. I think the bigger issue is whether or not you, you have a fine system. I get a little nervous about the, um, the, uh, public service or community service, only because that probably puts the staff in an enforcement role. And I, so I'm supposed to go to one of my bosses and say, by the way, I need you to pick up trash in the parks or whatever.
Send them to Plant Two.
You can just put that in there.
One week of service at Plant Two.
I mean, yeah, I didn't even think about service for the city. I thought, you know, doing public service, I'm gonna go volunteer here or there. So we could actually put in service at a local nonprofit church or charity, which would make it so Bob doesn't have to monitor our hours picking up trash. Um, I'm open to anything on, on this one, but I, I like the idea. Um, and I think we got a couple of things where, where if I could recap on what I think I'm hearing is, or we could just kind of leave that, put a line i- in lieu of a fine maybe, or, or an appropriate, or another appropriate, non-monetary.
Well, I mean, it kind of says it now, in addition or alternative to levying a fine, the EAB may also require training. Maybe it should be specific about the training.
Yeah, that part's, that part's, I think really hits on what.
I think that speaks to what council member Blue Bog is saying as well.
Exactly. I think that's, maybe we could even, we could even put that sentence maybe up first as, you know, if it's a correctable behavior, then it'll be read as the goal is to correct and to get people on, you know, the right track versus finding people. So maybe if that sentence was the first sentence, it would actually kind of put an explanation point on the point that council member Blue Bog made. And then I guess with the fine, um, if we wanted to, um.
I suppose I'd like to see that be the first penalty, and then the second one would be the fine. I think what we want is good behavior.
Right.
And that's the way you get to that, more so than just the fine. A fine could be more punitive as a secondary, uh, penalty, but the, the goal here is to have the best behavior. And you, you do that by better training.
Can we add some language that maybe in extreme situations, a fine would be appropriate? My only thought is if we found, like, you know, yeah, I'm in the hypothetical zone where I can't even think of a good example. But what if something was happening where like, oh yeah, that should be a fine, like.
And you just wanna be able to have, that you, you're suggesting that the board have that in their toolbox, right? If they, if they felt like that was something they wanted to use.
Some predetermined behaviors that have a fine amount.
So, and that's what I mean, like, how do we balance that? Where we give the board the flexibility, just like we would a court, like judges have the flexibility, but the policy or the ordinance kind of gives you that, um, kind of give you that, uh, uh, range. But language, and, and I'm gonna stop talking so you guys can come up with the language. Uh, but I think I'd know if I, conceptualizing and hearing right what is being said. Language that more so stresses the importance of education, the importance of getting, getting people, you know, where, where we need to be. Uh, and then in, in highlighting maybe in a more extreme circumstance, the board may levy a fine.
And council member.
Or a, or a public censure.
Or.
So the preferred approach is education or training. Um, but i- in, uh, in the, in the case of a serious violation as determined by the board, they could entertain a public censure or a fine. And if it's a fine, then you have these limitations, a hundred to a thousand, something like that.
And/or.
Pardon me?
You said or, and/or.
Yeah, and/or.
You just said or.
Oh, oh.
You said censor or, when I'm saying should be and.
And/or, okay.
I mean, it could be and/or the whole way, or and/or education as well, but I, I like the wording. I couldn't repeat it, but I liked it when Andrew said it. That's why he's been, but.
And council member Fry, you read something that said as an alternative, the Ethics Advisory Board may require training. That's for appointed officials. So that would be for our district advisory board members or any of that la- that paragraph. If a complaint against an appointed official is ruled a violation, that appointed official may be removed from their position. So that's not for us as elected, that's for our appointees in case they're found in violation, the way I'm interpreting that.
There's also a similar sentence in the last, the last sentence of the first paragraph.
Oh, yeah.
May require training. Yeah, I saw that. But I just wanted, again, and that's the part that we added because of not knowing where the fine would go. But just wanted to make sure that we highlighted that there is something in there about appointed. Because I know at my district advisory board meeting, that was something that they weren't really aware of when we were going down this path and had a lot of questions about.
Yeah, I was reading it from the paragraph above that, yeah.
Did we add enough confusion yet, Bob?
No, a- actually, this one's clearer than some others.
It's just a lot of stuff. And before we leave this section, I wanna go back to the qualification section. So are we, I don't know if we're finished here.
Okay, so here's what I'm going to do. I will move this section and the parag- the paragraph afterwards in, under procedures. The training, we're gonna change the, the order in here. And the training will be, if a violation is determined by the board, um, the first priority is, um, to, um, require that individual go through train, uh, ethics training. However, in case of serious violation as determined by the board, they may also issue a public censure and/or a fine. And then we'll have the restrictions on the fine. And then the very last sentence, which is in red that you didn't talk about, that actually will be moved underneath EAB. Since we're moving things around, that's more appropriate to be on that, on that, so. Okay, so back to qualifications.
Yeah.
Well, one sec on that.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Just one more thing. I don't think we addressed council member Tuttle's concern about timeline on the fine.
Oh, yeah.
Thirty days for us.
So thirty day, well, I was thinking like, in the, in the instance of someone who may not have a lot of resources, maybe sixty days.
What do we think?
Give them some time.
What, do we have any precedence on, if I got pulled over speeding, I don't know, what, what, do we have any precedence? Or do we really, we're really worried about sixty days of that, split the difference, forty-five? What are you thinking?
I'm good with sixty.
Sixty's good. Just people to adjust their budget.
Sorry, council member Claycon.
That's okay. Oh, I wanted to finish that before we went on. Um, back to qualifications, I think, uh, vice mayor asked about this and then I maybe lost track. On number seven of qualifications on page five, that members of the EAB have no conflict of interest, including this. They, they can't own a business entity regulator or subject to authority of the city of Wichita. Aren't all businesses subject to some regulation by the city of Wichita?
I mean, that's a, yeah, I mean, that's kind of.
So we would, we would kick out every business owner as a possibility and I.
That wouldn't be the intent, so let's go ahead and address that. I mean, that's a really good catch. The.
I didn't catch it the first time it, when you brought that up.
Yeah, and, and, cause that's not the intent at all, right?
It's truly someone doing business with the city of Wichita as a contractor or a provider of services.
And, and that, so, and I'll tell you, when I was, when I added these to your, this language, um, this objective standard that I, I was working with was, um, these two were in the same, I think this is the Kansas City, Kansas. These two are in the same, uh, the same section or same policy. So I think that council member Fry's read on this is right. It's, it's more so in context with, not that you're subjected to, I don't know, file a liquor license or something with the city, but you, you don't have a, a interest in the outcome, because like, you know, let's say you do business with the city. Like it's supposed to be more in that context, so let's, let's figure out and clean up that language.
Well, could we just, I think the second bullet point, owning business entities under or negotiating a contract with the city of Wichita. Does that get, does that cover what you want it to, what we would want it to?
Let, let us take a look at it, because I think that what is not necessarily covered here would be businesses that are receiving incentives from the city.
Oh, yeah.
For instance, yeah, I, I'm not sure how we define IRB, whether that's a contract or not. Well, let us take a look at it.
You understand what we're trying to get at, so.
No, and I think that, you know, we could probably agree to, moving forward, I guess, kind of strike that first line, uh, at least that language and then ask staff to develop language either into the second line or its own line about, about incentives. I, I think that kind of definitely reaches where we wanna go without closing out everyone who owns a business. So good, good catch, um, council member.
Vice mayor pointed that, and then I think we did mention that if, so they, let's say they get appointed to the board and then enter into negotiations with the city. I think we have to have some process for them. I don't know, do they have to step down at that time if they get a contract? You know, I, I don't know what ought to happen, but I could see that happening, that someone was appointed and then over time. So they just recuse themselves?
No, I, I think what it is, is if they enter into, if they're, if they get involved in that situation, they would step down from the board.
Okay, that's what I think too, so we probably need to put that in somewhere. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so then we move to page seven. This is pretty simple. It's, uh, the National League of Cities had talked about the city clerk being more appropriate for receiving the complaints. At the workshop, you wanted to make sure that someone could file, uh, their submission could be electronic, not just paper copy. That's how in writing it would be defined. There are a number of places where the ethics officer is substituted for EAB chair. And then there, you said in the workshop, you wanted more discussion about those who, whether or not there should be penalties for those who abuse the complaint system.
I have one thing really quick before we jump into that, Bob. On page six, the last thing that, that said, uh, it was Jennifer's amendment, the EAB has no delegated powers other than those outlined above. And it mentioned that, uh, the paragraph right before that, an appointed official might be removed from their position without the imposition of a fine. So are we saying we're giving the EAB the power to remove? Or will they submit to the council the recommendation to remove and then the council votes on that?
Well, someone resigns. I, I interpret that, good question. I interpret that as I'm getting investigated for something that I did. I don't wanna go through the embarrassment. I choose to resign. Um, and so I, I resign from the board. Um, and that, that was how, and then there's very no more. So that's a, but I, I understand what you're saying, like, are we implying that this board could remove someone? That there's not precedence for that, that I've read, so.
You know, I think you raise a good point. I think it would be appropriate for the EAB to make the recommendation to council that this person resigned and then council can vote to, um, remove them from their appointment.
Okay. That was it. Sorry, Bob.
Yeah, no, no problem. All right.
On the officer section though, I did have, um, the section that you did jump to. The part that was not edited, but the seven days from receipt of complaint, is that just seven days in general of seven business days?
I think the common reading would be seven calendar days, unless business days is stated. It's usually just calendar days.
So, since we're in this section, in paragraph one, it says any allegation of violation by any appointed member or any elected. So only appointed members and city council members can make complaints? And do we need to define appointed members? Is that any appointed body that this council makes?
Probably should replace the word by with against. If that's your intent.
Yeah, the intent was to.
I think it's against.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that was the intent was to not.
Yeah, I think that's the wrong word. It, that's carried. It should be, yeah, it should be any allegation of code of ethics violation against any appointed member, any.
Okay.
Okay, so now anyone can make a complaint? Anyone in the city and they can make it to the EAB? Okay.
So then that gets us back to the issue of, uh, of potential abuse of the complaint system.
So, yeah, the, the interpretation of this, um, or I guess the, the standard of this to try to discourage, I guess, a lot of, of miscellaneous complaints was to, you know, the complaintant under oath would have to sign and would have to, uh, you know, pretty much be identified. And then, then we have language that was added about, shouldn't be it, maybe, maybe it was added, about, um, unfounded complaints where, it, it, it takes after the Kansas Ethics Commission as well, where people during election cycles, you usually get folks who are sending stuff into the Kansas Ethics and they're trying to tag, see what sticks to the wall, right? Um, that happens during campaign cycles and the, really the only, they, they focus only on the stuff that's real. Um, so the idea is to highlight that not every complaint requires this board to get together. It's to kind of take it after that fore worth that, you know, the, the, the standard of practice that other cities have gone through where you gotta have something that kind of rises to that level. So not everything would go to the, to get to, the intent of this is not everything would go to the board just cause it was a complaint. And, and basically, most of it, I think, would, the officer would call and say, what's going on or?
Yeah, I guess the question would be what is corid, corable? And if, if there are two hundred complaints filed and the board only sees three that are legitimate, what does the media report? Oh, there were two hundred complaints filed against this council person, when actually only three were reviewed. That is, that is penalizing and becoming very, uh, what was the word I said earlier? Sorry, just totally lost the word I was trying to use.
Jennifer can address this, but I, I believe it's, it is subject to cora, based on, uh, previous advice that she's given me as we put this together.
That's correct. It would be an open record, under the Kansas Open Records Act.
So that's.
So all complaints, whether they were.
All complaints, even those dismissed. We would report those submitted and as well as those that were dismissed and never reached the board.
So I will, cause I understand the, the concern and thought about that, and I, I see it slightly different. Where there is nothing that would stop two hundred complaints on a council member going to Bob and have that corable. The difference here is you actually have a above approach standing body that decides it's not, you know, or, or one employee is Bob, right, uh, or the council. You have this, this third party that you can say, yeah, it was a campaign season, the, uh, election or the, um, ethics officer, um, deemed none of them were, were of value. Like you have that, um, that extra kind of push. And again, that, that's one of the, the good things about having this, is it does protect you, I think, from being peppered with stuff that's not true. Where, hey, if you think there's an ethics, what I'm doing is an ethics vi- violation, then, um, you know, file a complaint. And then we, you, with, with the Ethics Commission and, and, you know, we'll, we'll see if they agree. Like it allows kind of that third above approach, uh, party to, to make it so it's not just completely controlled by media or by, you know, anything else.
So should, so should the board provide a reason then for every dismissed? Should, should the board say dismissed as unfounded or dismissed as frivolous?
Or, I think that would get into how they administer the board, but I'm pretty sure that the Kansas, Kansas Ethics, they, they don't take every complaint. They don't take the complaints that, that. that, that meet, you know, meet, meet the standard to be looked into. And the goal was to capture language that also allowed dismissal of stuff that either isn't, isn't, um, isn't founded or also dismissal where the jurisdiction isn't here, right? Like, what you're complaining about, um, you should go send that complaint to the Kansas Ethics or, uh, Kansas Ethics Commission, or you should send that complaint to the D A because that sounds above and beyond what we do. Uh, so that was the, the intent.
I know this isn't directly applicable, but we, we wrestled with this as we've been preparing a staff document that includes whistleblower. And we talked about if there is ill intent in the filing of a complaint, that then action can be taken against the complaint, right? But that has to be proven during an investigation. But we wanted to keep, because we recognize how damaging it can be if someone makes a complaint regardless of whether it has merit or not. And so we wanted to be able to take action against someone who has a personal vendetta, whatever the reason is. It doesn't, we don't want to discourage whistleblowing, we don't want to discourage the filing of ethics complaints, but we don't want someone to weaponize the system. Um, and that's, so that's why we, it can lead to termination or other disciplinary action for a staff member that's involved in that action. I don't know how you do that with citizens, but I think that's what, what council was wrestling with, or, um.
Jennifer, do you know if, uh, Kansas Ethics, if those, um, complaints, are those subject to cora? Do you know?
That's a good question. I would assume so, but I, I, I'm not aware of a carve out in the Kansas Open Records Act. It's a good question, I'd, I'd like to look into that.
And this might be one of those, well, I don't know if we're willing to do this, but this could be one of those where we review it in a year, you know, because it might, it might be three, it might be none, it might be two hundred, but, but we don't know. And so it's difficult to make a determination on how to move forward with this, but in a year we'll review it.
And, and I think also, I, I agree with you completely because I think also the, the, this board is going to be a pretty high functioning board and they can come up with probably some ways, some procedures that, that are going to mimic the, the standards, which I'm sure Kansas Ethics Commission is, is at those same standards, um, where it, it might not be an issue to people who, who, who work in this, in that world. Um, and so, uh, I think, and, and like I said, as someone who's run for office, two years for, geez, I mean, I've been doing this, Johnson, for a long time, a lot of, you get complaints and, and other complaints, they, they usually tense up during, um, campaign season and, and most of them are just people who, it's political and not much of a basis. So, and I know that dealing with the Kansas Ethics Commission, they, they don't amount to anything because they have that, with their internal organization has that ability because they are kind of a third group, no one suspects them of, of being, I, I guess, biased. And I also, um, will point out that a, a, a really good, when it comes to violations, a really good thing about having this, uh, and, and I have appreciated the Kansas Ethics Commission, uh, because you can have that conversation with, uh, with, with someone to help keep you out of trouble, but also, um, uh, they will call you and say, hey, we heard that you did a robo-call and your robo, your paid for buy was at the end instead of at the beginning. Did you know it's supposed to be at the beginning? Like, no, I didn't, I had no idea. And like, well, did you, um, did you do this? Yep. And they'll send you a, a letter saying, don't do it again. Um, but it gives you an opportunity to kind of come clean. And a lot of times, I think with these ethics case studies, it's the cover up that winds up being worse than the actual crime.
Yeah.
Not that any of this is crime, but you know what? We, we want to encourage self-reporting where, hey, I sent an email using the wrong email, uh, here, I won't do it again, I, it was just something silly, and then they can send back, you know, okay, don't do it again, we're gonna give you a strike. And so that's, that's also something that this should be taken into account on is, is we don't want someone to try to, to, there might be some self-reporting as well, um, which is a much better pathway than trying to cover up some.
So at this point, the language will stay as it is and we'll re, it'll be revisited a year from now. Okay? The, um. If we go to the end of that section on procedures, um, during the workshop, it was suggested that to protect all the parties involved, that evidence collected during the investigation be retained for one year. And then, um, Councilmember Claycomb suggested, under ethics education, that, um, we specifically talk about, uh, providing ethics training during the orientation process, um, that we not just throw a code of ethics at people and expect them to understand it.
Yeah, and that came from my dad. They were like, we don't know what we're doing here for sure and so.
And that's smart, that's, that's a really good one.
So I did have a, I guess, a question for the body on evidence collected being retained for a year. What is the thought of maybe retaining it for that individual's term?
For the elected officials, for the appointed or elected's term?
Just while they're in office. I mean, I, I just think, could be nothing, but maybe there is something there that tie, if they do it again or something else, you know, maybe there's something that ties into it rather than just getting rid of it after a year. So that way, when they're done, then, then it's gone because they're not appointed anymore.
Good idea.
Evidence or just the report? Just the evidence?
The report will probably stay alive.
The report stays alive, you're just saying.
The evidence, yeah.
It was just a thought, I mean, you know, if we.
I think it's a good idea.
Keep it one year, but.
No, because you jump into interesting, I mean, it's an interesting thought, but I think you're, you're right in the absolutely rarest of situations where the evidence links years later to another.
Past the statute of limitations.
Yeah, like, well, and as I said, like, statute of limitations don't run out where a few years later turns out like, wow, this person has done, is now in criminal trouble and the ethics board had some emails that linked that person to.
Yeah.
That starting then, I mean, that, not a bad idea, I guess, if we, and after your term is up, it's not the, the responsibility of the ethics board to maintain if there wasn't the evidence.
Okay.
Is that?
I've got it.
Get all that written down?
For the length of, for the length of the official's term.
Yeah.
On page eight, um, number two, under whistleblower protection, a good catch by Councilmember Claycomb, um, that this sentence applies to employees, but it talked about, um, uh, removal from an appointed position, which caused confusion about, you know, we were crossing the line between employees and appointed board and commission members, so struck that one piece. And then, uh, the clarification, number four is stricken because of the fact that , um, everything is subject to cora, um, in this regard. And then number, the very last section was requested at the workshop, that if some portion of this is found to be invalid, that the rest of the policy would stay in force. So I can summarize what I have heard from all of you. Um, the first thing is the friend, definition of friend will be deleted and, um, any references to friend will be stricken with the understanding that the concept of influence and being above approach is already in the document itself, so there's implication in that regard. In, let me see. Then, uh, when we get to Ethics Advisory Board, there's a few typos to get changed. Number seven, there is a deletion of the first bullet point. The second bullet point will be amended to address, um, and businesses receiving incentives and any others that would appear to be a conflict, we'll figure that out.
The M's need to be capitalized as well, sorry.
Yeah, I said that, typos.
Oh, did you?
Did we, before you go on, Bob, did we, uh, want to make changes to number four? Or did you decide that, that active member is good enough?
It was determined that based on your discussion, that the ethics officer will rule.
Rule, okay.
And will provide guidance on that if there's a question.
Okay.
And then, yeah, and if it's, we can turn that a year if it's kind of over the top.
Yes, okay, thanks.
And then the, on the next, oh, and by the way, the, the language on E A B, E A B has no delegated powers other than those outlined above will be moved into that section. And then, um, on page six, the term will be for two years with the option for reappointment for additional two-year terms. There needs to be language in here of, under selection, that the council may ask the board for additional nominees if, uh, the council is not satisfied through its vetting process. We'll have to come up with some language in that regard. Next two paragraphs will actually be moved under the, uh, board's procedures. It will include failure, first of all, it'll be reorganized so that Ethics Advisory Board may, um, require, uh, ethics education in the case of a violation. However, if it determines there is a, that the violation is serious enough, it may also issue public censure and/or a fine. And then there'll be the language on the fine. And then failure to pay the fine within sixty days will result in public censure. In terms of a complaint against an appointed official, the appointed official, um, a recommendation will be made to the city council for a removal from this, their position. Then, on Ethics Advisory Board Procedures, first sentence, allegation of code of ethics violation against any appointed member. Uh, we're going to keep the second paragraph as it is, uh, review in a year. And then, any evidence down to the bottom of that, the last paragraph, any evidence collected during the investigation will be retained for the length of the official's term. And that's what I have for changes.
So I just have one more I wanted to have a discussion about. Uh, we mentioned it the last, one of the last workshops, I guess. And just, uh, it's a little bit stemming from my experience in legislature, but also a little bit from, I, I guess, past stories I've, I've heard here, not from, about anyone who's currently serving, but, uh, any type of, um, staff issues between electeds and appointed. Um, and, and it was when we were discussing bullying, where should we have something in there where, uh, if a staff member is being bullied by an appointee or by a council member and elected, there's really no recourse for that person besides to go to the media or to file a, a legal case? Could we, if we put in something along these lines about, um, no bullying staff, like federal language and that, obviously, it would give the ethics official a chance to, like, possibly send a letter to, if a member was a, let's say a board member was, was over the top with staff, send a letter and recommend training, like, kind of get that person's attention. Uh, and try to just to round out, I guess, that environment, uh, of, um, of collaboration and work because they don't fall under the H R policy and we know the H R, employees can't treat employees that way. Well, if we have a member of, you know, a board member or even one of us, which I doubt we would, um, who is mistreating a staffer, I mean, that puts Bob in a really weird spot, I think. So should we look at some language about that?
So I, I, I definitely appreciate the, um, consideration of that. Under the National League of Cities' recommendations, that would be under the Code of Conduct, similar to the cyberbullying issue. And, um, so that's, that, that was one of the specific items they listed for consideration in a Code of Conduct.
So sticking with the, um, with, with the suggestive standards then, or, or objective standards, that we would talk about appointees or electeds bullying a staff member under the Code of Conduct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, not to incur your wrath, but I'm in the heart of my budget season. I would really like permission to get this done and get you a draft report next week for approval on the eleventh, if that's possible, given the date right now. But I need to rework some of this and then get a good report.
So instead of on the fourth, you want to do that, you want us to vote on this on the eleventh?
Well, just because we have a few more changes and a few things I have to work on, but I also have a number of budget hearings between now and.
You sure you don't want to add an anti-bullying amendment to this, where we can't bully you during our week about, come on, Bob, we want to.
You'll get, you'll have the report, I just want to make sure everybody's in agreement with the changes, that when it comes to you on the, on the la, for final approval, everybody's nodding, yes, that's reflective of what we said.
Okay, and, and then your request is to give you an extra week to ensure that everything's slapped in here well?
Right.
And vote on it on the eleventh instead of the fourth? Is there any concern about that? I really don't think another week's going to make a difference.
Okay.
But is there any?
We'll get, as I said, you'll have the report and the, the changes and then that gives you time next week to correct me if I didn't get it right.
Thanks. Start thinking about who our appointees would be, so. Any other discussion on this?
I think this was some great work, appreciate staff working on this and I really like, um, how this actual document came together citing N L C and the different members of the council who had input. I thought that was really good and gave us an opportunity for some real good conversation.
Yeah, and I, I am so impressed with how this process worked out. I, I have also been a critic of the process and I need to apologize for that, um, just in the end, although it's frustrating, uh, when you're trying to work on something that, you know, particularly when you have a diverse board of people who you have to work with and it's just, this wouldn't have gotten to, I think, the quality it's at if it wasn't for everyone, um, stepping up, helping out, but also really, uh, taking our time with it, going to the N L C. And I know that I have not always been the best at, or the most appreciative of, um, of, of the process here and, and I want to apologize to anyone, uh, who noticed me being less appreciative of the process, um, because I, I have been corrected this document. Uh, it is really good because we took our time with it and everyone had a chance to jump in on it. So just want to make sure, make sure I had that said. Any other discussion? We are technically not in a meeting, so I'm not going to make a motion to adjourn, but I guess if there's any objection to our hearing, there is none. With that, we're adjourned, thank you all. See you next week.